And you just press down and you just, that's it?
Trish Bodie.
Here.
Gloria Gonzalez Delucchia.
Here.
Anna Smith.
Here.
Shade Fashakun.
Here.
Paul Gautier.
Here.
Christine Mauer.
Here.
Francesca Romans.
Here.
All right, it is 6:16 PM and with a quorum of the board present, I declare our regular meeting for May 11th to order. We will now start with our pledge of allegiance, but before we stand, let me introduce and welcome Cadet Haylen Hendricks of the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC at Vista Ridge High School to lead us this evening in our pledge of allegiance and the Texas pledge. Cadet Hendricks is a 10th grade student at Vista Ridge High School and is the son of Ashley and Jessica Hendricks. Haylen is an active member of the Lone Star Company's varsity armed drill team. Cadet, hey, uh, sorry, just a second. Cadet Hendricks takes pride in serving the community as a volunteer at Veterans Memorial Park and local adopter road cleanups. Through his success, he was recently assigned as platoon commander for the 23-24 school year. Cadet Hendricks takes it upon himself to mentor fellow students and encourages them to participate in extracurricular activities. His commitment to service, sharp personal appearance, and exemplary conduct earned him the designation as Cadet of the Month for April 2023. Cadet Hendricks' performance and dedication were a vital part of the Lone Star Company's success, which resulted in our unit being ranked number one in the state of Texas. His actions reflect most favorably on the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC, his school, and Leander ISD Well Done Cadet Hendricks.
Thank you. Thank you. Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
All right, board members, we will now go to the next favorite part of our meeting this evening. It is our recognition, we have a spotlight this evening on learning with River Ridge Elementary School. I'm waiting for the presentation for just a moment. Awesome, thank you. Thank you for having us spotlight our very special wonderful school on the ridge. I am Shelley Roberts. I am the principal at River Ridge Elementary and I have some fabulous guests here with us today, so I'm going to let them introduce themselves.
Nora Jensen.
Anna Erickson.
Natalie Jensen.
And I'm Gareth Cook, the assistant principal at River Ridge.
And we are excited to share with you some of the work that we're doing here at River Ridge. And we really worked hard to bring the graduate profile to life. And a few years ago, when we did the revamp with the graduate profile, our staff decided on what our big focus area would be, taking in community input, student input, parent input, and really worked hard to bring that to life this year. So our big focus, as you can see up there, is to what degree do our students are equipped with skills and opportunities needed for, I don't have my glasses on as I'm saying all this, for academic and personal growth that will serve them outside of the school walls. And so we are super excited to have them share some of the things they're doing. I should have that all memorized, but it's kind of lengthy.
Do you want me to read that?
So, one of the things, go ahead.
Do you want me to read that next one? Okay, the next one says, "To what degree do our learning environments promote a sense of belonging and ensure each learner feels included, accepted, and safe to be their individual self in our classrooms and schools?"
Go ahead, Mr. Cook.
"To what degree do students have the opportunity to engage in meaningful learning experiences to deeply explore and investigate areas of aptitude and interest and build real-life skills for their future?"
So I'm going to go back and talk a little bit about our personal and academic goal setting. So every child in our school has a personal and academic goal that they are working on. Tessa, do you want to put that on for me? Can you put it on? Awesome. And so we really thought it would be important for our students to feel empowered if they really understand what goal setting means. So we started off with a book called Ambitious Ninja. And it talks about, this is a fantastic book, by the way, it talks about process goals, outcome goals, and performance goals. And we really wanted to hone in with our kids about process goals, which means those things that you do every day and you have complete control of. And so every child in the school had a basketball. Earlier it was a football, next year will be something different. And they were able to control their goals and move them up and down the court, how they, how they were achieving it. If they got a slam dunk, then they got a new basketball and started all over again. Once they learned that process with their personal goals, then we transferred it into their academic goals. So I'm going to let Mr. Cook start with Natalie.
Okay Natalie, you've got a nice little orange folder there and that talks about your academic goals, but let's start easy. What was your personal goal that you've recently met?
My personal goal that I recently met was to get my roundoff two back handsprings on the spring floor.
What in the world is a roundoff back handspring with two thingies on the floor?
A roundoff is like, like, kind of like a cartwheel.
So you're talking about gymnastics?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So, how did you meet this goal? What steps did you take to make this goal happen?
I went to my practice on Wednesdays and I, like, I started with one back handspring and then yesterday I made my goal, actually.
For the first time?
Yeah.
Congratulations. Have you ever had to try more than once to meet the goal?
Yes.
And what was that like?
Well, I did roundoff one and then my coach just fought me on the second one and they tricked me and told me they were going to spot me, but they don't spot me.
So, failure is part of the process?
Yes.
Okay. And let's take a look at this. This is what we use in all of our classrooms. Each teacher works with their students to set academic goals and we're going to focus on math, correct? Specifically the map growth tests that we take in BOI, MOI, and EOI. So tell me a little bit about what your beginning of the year goal was for the map test.
So, my winter goal was 213 and I got 209. And then my spring goal was, the map thing said 213, but my teacher made a goal for myself for 215 and I reached that goal. And to reach my goal, I, my teacher in iXL, she put things that we more struggled on, on the test, and put them in so we could work on those things.
Okay, and so iXL is a computer program, right?
Yeah, it's a map thing.
And it helps you do what?
Math.
Okay, and so, that's very good. And so we can just show you guys, this, they charted themselves, so you can see here, do you draw this or do your teachers draw this?
Well, yeah, I do it myself.
So how is this making an impact on you that you're setting all these goals? Would it, is it different than not paying attention to the goal setting?
It helps me understand that, like, things, like, how much I need to go up and like, what I'm better at.
Okay. Thank you so much Natalie, we really appreciate you speaking to us.
Thank you Natalie, and she's one of our third graders. We have a kindergarten here, Ms. Tessa, and she's going to talk to us about some of the goals that she set. You set a lot of goals this year, didn't you? Yes, can you tell me one of the goals that you set?
I set to count to 100 by 1.
Okay, have you gotten there yet or are you still working on it?
I've gotten there yet.
Not yet?
I have gotten there yet.
You have? Yes? That's awesome, because yesterday you were still working on it, so I'm so proud of you. But your crown says, "Hooray, I can count by fives." How did you earn that crown?
By counting by five. It took a lot of practice to do it.
Can you do it for us?
Yes. Five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35, 40, 25, 50, 55, 60, 65, 70, 75, 80, 85, 90, 95, 100.
Woo, good job, Tessa! I'm so proud of you and I also know you've earned a lot of crowns. Do, did you learn, earn a crown for anything else yet? Hmm, I think you might have. Was it something about sight words?
Yes.
What did you do?
I learned all my sight words.
And do you have a favorite sight word?
Yes.
What is it?
The.
All right, Tessa, one more question. Did you put a basketball on your poster? This is not your class's poster, but did you do that? Yes, what was your personal goal?
My personal goal was to do a flip.
To do a flip on the ground or on the monkey bars?
On a bar, not on the ground.
And have you been practicing?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, thank you, Tessa. So something else we discussed at River Ridge is really creating a safe and inclusive environment. And what we had noticed is that sometimes recess is the hardest place for our students to figure out what to do. And so, as a staff and with students, we really came up with a way to address that concern. And so I have Ms. Anna here, who's going to talk a little bit about being on the Alternative Recess Club. So Anna, will you tell us a little bit about that club?
It's a club because some kids, like at recess, they don't know, like, what to do and they're like bored. So we made the club to like, find like, things to do for the kids at recess.
Awesome, thank you. And so, let's talk about that process, because we did use some improvement tools with the, with the students. So students were able to, any student was able to join, third through fifth. Anna was one of those members. And Anna, you, what did it look like? What was that first day like?
First, we just wrote down like, our ideas on sticky notes.
Mm-hmm, sticky notes are important. And then, what did you do with the sticky notes?
Then we like grouped them into categories.
Okay.
And we got like rid of the ones that were just not good ideas, like trampolines and archery.
They were on there, trampoline and archery were on there for sure. And then I brought it to the site-based decision-making team to look over as well and they decided on some things. And then we brought it back to you guys and what did you do?
Then we voted on our favorite ones and then we ended up having limbo, chess, and some building blocks.
Awesome, thank you so much for sharing. And did you get to play with the building blocks, Anna? Yes, we got to do all the, try out all the things and we're going to roll that out officially next year, because we took the whole year to figure out exactly what we wanted out there. Okay, so, last but not least, Ms. Nora here is here to talk to you about zero hour. So this year, we really knew we needed some more time in our PLCs and we were trying to build that time, but also make it impactful for our students. And so we wanted to give our students these enrichment opportunities, first thing in the morning, starts at 7:10, and allow them to enjoy some of those different activities that they don't always get during the school day. So, can you tell us about zero hour?
So zero hour is a place in the morning that we all go to and we kind of get to like, start off and like, play with things or like, build things to like, start our minds off while the teachers are doing things. And then we get to go like, talk about things and learn more about things, but it's in like a fun way.
So what are some of the stations that we have?
We have Innovation Lab, Critical Thinking, Kickstart, and Mindfulness. And then for fifth graders, we also have shooting basketballs with Mr. Cook.
I didn't know I did that. Yeah, I did that a little bit too, all right. So, tell, what is, what is mindfulness?
Mindfulness is like, with our, um...
Our counselor?
Our counselor and we like, get, it's like very peaceful and we like, listen to confident music and we like, do things that are like peaceful to us. We like, draw with like, things that are like, fun, I guess, but in like a mindfulness way.
What is your, what is your favorite thing to do?
Shooting basketballs.
There we go. I think I set a challenge once, if they can make it from half court, they could have a treat and they've yet to meet that challenge yet. So, it's still open. Y'all are more than welcome to try it yourselves.
So we have some really great things happening at River Ridge. These are all new initiatives that we're going to continue. They've been very successful. We're very grateful for the LEAF Foundation because they funded some of the things that we do in our zero hour. Our Critical Thinking Lab is, it's fantastic and I know that our Quest teacher wrote a grant for that and so we were able to add that into that zero hour time. I thank you guys so much for letting us showcase River Ridge. And ladies, how do we end all of our announcements? We at River Ridge, think big.
Dream big.
Believe big. And the results will be big.
Have a wonderful day of learning.
Can we have, the board members go for a picture, but we want to have the parents, yeah, and the siblings who came to support our students up here to please stand up so we can recognize and applaud for y'all as well. So parents, siblings. Thank y'all so much, it does take our community and thank y'all so much for coming to present. All right, and we will continue with our recognitions. We have a video celebrating some great things going on on campus, recognitions and awards. They're looking for a video and so while they're looking, I will go ahead and just, if okay, put a pause in that item until they can find it. We'll move to communication announcements. Board member remarks. Board members, I want to point out for you, there is a new chart on the wall. Still hot dots, still continuous improvement. But remember, board members, we had a discussion about what do we think is the ultimate purpose of a board? What are, what are we as a board wanting to do and improve on so that we can support our superintendent improving, which will support principals, administrations, teachers, and ultimately, the students in the classroom? And so, at your desk is a chart of those things that we came up with. And if you'll notice, one of those is conduct effective board meetings. And we came up with things that we wanted and that conduct effective board meetings. For this evening, we're going to do a consensogram. So when you get ready to leave, just put your hot dot on your number by 10%. To what percentage do you think we conducted an effective board meeting? And then we'll keep hitting one of these items per meeting and then we'll go from there. That's that item. Do we have our video? Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead, anybody else have board member remarks?
Okay, I'll go first. So, let's see, from the last board meeting, we were here, I'm just like, kind of looking back, making sure I catch everything, just because we had such, we've had such busy calendars this spring is, is just kind of crazy. So, we wrapped up the, the end of the dance show season with Leander High School and Vandergrift High School, which was amazing, just fantastic, fine arts department. I can't say enough about all the, all the dance teachers out there doing, doing such great work with our students who just have found their passion in dance, it's just lovely. We did have our long-range planning meeting last week. There's going to be community members added to that group, so that's exciting. And on a personal note, my freshman finished his first year of college, so yay! And he's home, yay, so that's it.
Like Christine said, we've been pretty busy, but you know, it's, what is it, May, December is what they call it, the craziest month of the year. So I got to kick off, Francesca and I actually got to go to Laura Walsh-Bush Elementary and hang out with Ms. Gordon and she did Art Cave Day. And for those that don't know what Art Cave Day is, it is the coolest way ever to learn about cave drawings by a kindergarten's perspective. And you walk in, again, it's a, it's completely dark, there's black lights everywhere and the students are just so excited. And she created this tunnel for these kids to, you know, crawl through and she sits them down and they learn about a cave painting, lacrosse, cross, I believe the name is, it's like, it's an old cave out in, in Paris. But what I loved about it is something that seems kind of boring to kindergarten, she made it actually really fun and they were able to see a side of art that's fun, but also learn some history while they're having fun. So it was great, so. I love what Amber's doing out there and I can't wait to go out there and do some more art fun days. Last night, I had the privilege of going and celebrating the end of the year with our Leander Lasers. For those that don't know, that's our special Olympic group, students that play sports. And you want to talk about family engagement, y'all, like, there was about 120 people there. These kids were having the time of their life. They were being celebrated for something that they enjoy. And I want to say, shout out to the Gills, I believe that's their name, yeah, the Gills. They've been longtime volunteers with the Lasers and they will be moving this year, but they've been with this program from, I asked, they said, since forever. And so, they've been great volunteers for our students and providing those opportunities for our students who really do need those outside, outside of school and just feeling part of the community. So I, what they've got going on there, I can't thank our adopted PE department enough, like, it's just good stuff. And last but not least, Leander High School has been going through a LHS Master Plan Design Workshop. We've had four meetings. For those need to know, we started and it was, appeared in the bond as the phase one. And since, you know, the board put it on there, the community of LHS has been meeting four different times and it is probably, I loved it because, I'll be honest, I was afraid it was going to be very administration-driven, but it really wasn't. It was our students, it was our teachers, it was our parents. They were not happy with the design, they didn't see, you know, a certain CTE program, you know, represented well. They made their voice heard. And y'all, I'm proud to say that fourth meeting, that Master Plan Design, I am excited to see what's going to be the future of LHS. It is going to be amazing, but most importantly, it was parent, student, teacher-led.
Like Christine said, we finished off all of the dance shows with Leander High School and Vandergrift and the talent those kids have is incredible and it was so much fun and I think I'm the second most emotional board member now. Because it was, it was really emotional to watch them do what they love and to watch the seniors do their last shows and finish all of their, their dance careers at LISD, basically. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to go to the Leadership Leander ISD Graduation and it was so much fun. This was all community members that had been doing this program. They went around to different departments. I believe they got to be principals for a day and they really got involved to see what exactly goes on with our district, how it works, what everybody does, what all the different departments are doing. And it was... the different departments are doing, and it was an incredible program. It was the first time in, I think for five years, they said, that we've had this program, and it was great to see. So hopefully, we'll see all of those graduates volunteering in other capacities in the district now.
Board members, I'll point out that it is a busy legislative season as well. Legislative Committee has been busy, trustees have been busy going up to the Capitol. Today marks the 122nd day of 140 days of session. That means that it's a bit insane. There's also a lot of things that are moving where you thought a bill wasn't going to go anywhere, and all of a sudden, it appears as an amendment on another bill. So it's important to just stay engaged. As a result, CTSBA and trustees will be going up to the Capitol again on Tuesday, so if you're available, just, uh, reach out to Cindy, tell her, tell her to let the Legislative Committee know that you'll be up there. Items are still moving and not yet solid yet on how we're going to see teacher support, accountability, and assessment. There's certain impacts to students in the classroom as far as their learning and curriculum, and that basic allotment, um, is still being requested and discussed heavily by trustees. We just haven't seen a lot of movement in legislation. We have hope, but we are going to stay engaged and keep reaching out to our community as we, um, try to see some of these items move. I will say, I was in, because when we go with, um, several trustees from different districts, you will get to visit with lawmakers that might not be your lawmaker for your district. I think that helps because you get to talk about all the great things that are going in public education across the state of Texas. And so, I was talking to a lawmaker who isn't one of our, um, area members, but as he was discussing, he has, um, a, a family member who has a student in Leander ISD. And he said, "Oh, and I've heard so much about this campus, do you know what's going on there?" And I said, "Oh my goodness, um, not only can I tell you something about it, we've got videos." And it was just so fresh in my mind because I had just done the Spotlight on Learning with River Ridge, which was amazing. And I said, "What campus again are you looking for?" Because I bet you we have a video. We didn't have one video, we had two, and I was able to send them a link immediately about what was going on in the campus. So it's just amazing to be able to continue to not only advocate for support for your school, but know that there are other people at the Capitol, so many, who have connections actually into this very district, and to help continue to promote that information to them of like, what does learning look like in the classroom? So it was fabulous experience. Alright, we'll conclude this agenda item then. Video's ready.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jordan Potter. I'm a 6th grader at Danielson Middle School.
And I'm Jenna Lee, a 6th grader at Danielson Middle School. We're excited to celebrate some spectacular accomplishments in #OneLISD.
Last week, we recognized the heart and soul of our campuses with Teacher Appreciation Week. Superintendent Gearing shares his thanks for a very special group of teachers, substitutes, instructional aides, and facilitators.
In #OneLISD, we call them life changers because they truly do positively affect the lives of each and every one of our students in our district every day. We want to take this moment to thank the teachers of our district, more than 3,000 of them in LISD, for the incredible work that they do, day in and day out, in our district, to positively affect our children and our community. So thank you, teachers, for the work that you do. But not only the teachers, also the substitute teachers, and there are more than 600 of them across our district every day, who help us to make sure that we fill those holes. Thank you for the work that you do to keep us going every single day. And to our instructional aides, every day you provide the support that our teachers need, the support that our students need, to make us one of the best districts in the state. So thank you, teachers. We hope you have a fantastic Teacher Appreciation Week.
A special shout out to my favorite teachers, Mr. A, Ms. Luke, and Coach Lee.
This week, we are highlighting the great work and tireless effort of our school nurses and nurses A during National Nurses Week. Let's hear from our district nurse, Kristin Wicketz.
Hi, my name is Kristin Wicketz. I'm the district nurse for Leander ISD, and I am honored I get this opportunity to celebrate our Leander ISD school nurses. Our nurses play an essential role in bridging the gap between health care and education. Our students and LISD community are fortunate to have access to a school nurse at each campus. These nurses partner with students, families, and campus staff to advocate for a whole-child approach. This approach will promote the well-being of each student, and also promotes and supports academic success. We are so very thankful for their expertise, leadership, and service. Thank you so much.
Spreading some love for our DMS nurse, Nurse Matt. He's positively amazing.
Let's get loud and proud of the Glenn High School's indoor drum line. The group participated in the Texas Color Guard Circus Schoolastic Marching Championship.
In their first year of competition, these student musicians were named the state champions. Judging consisted of musical and visual skill and effect. You got the beat. GHS percussion, way to go.
It's worth celebrating when teachers become students all over again. That's why we would like to honor the graduates of the AAA and P3 programs. Shout out to my dad, Mr. Potter, at Here DMS, the Basic Assistant Principal.
The Aspiring Administrators Academy and Perspective Principals Program prepares willing staff and assistant principals for leadership roles. With 14 assistant principals and 13 staff participants, respectively, we would like to congratulate these graduates. We're excited to see what's in store for you.
We're just plain proud of one particular administrator. Congratulations to Plain Elementary School Principal Erica Cruz for her nomination for the HEB Excellence in Education Award.
One of five principals nominated across the great state of Texas, Ms. Cruz, was selected for high-quality leadership and campus culture, instructional leadership and management, communication, and community relations.
Let's hear it for the pride and passion of empowered student learning and empowered staff. You can't beat it.
From all of us here who live the state's EK way, congratulations to these exceptional students and their families and our staff for such high achievements.
Oh my gosh, do we love Student Voice? That was amazing. They were great announcers, and now we'll go to another announcer to kick us off for our citizen comments. Do we have our student announcer?
Hello, my name is Kavari, and I'm a 7th grader at Styles Middle School. The district and the Board of Trustees are the local government body responsible for serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren, like me and my friends here in the Leander Independent School District. Their mission is to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The Board is now taking up the Citizen Comment Agenda Item. This is dedicated time during the meeting to hear from the whole community, and the entire LISD family is listening. The district believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. To our speakers, before you speak, we hope you have read Community Guidelines specified in Board Operating Procedures and BET Local. The Board wants to hear from everyone. Please be mindful of your conduct and the example you're choosing to say when presenting complex information. Remember that schoolchildren of all ages may be, may participate in board meetings, either by watching them online, or you might even see some of us in the audience. Still, remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email, come to a Board Cafe, or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime. When the Board President calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please conclude your comments when you hear the time.
Alright, speaker number one. And for our audience and board member and, and audience here and online, we have students first. They will always be at the top, and so, um, our students will be starting us off for citizen comments.
ISD School Board, we are here today to express our concern regarding the lack of adequate swimming and diving facilities in LISD. Swimming is a popular and well-performing sport in our district, with multiple teams qualifying for state. However, our current facilities do not fit the needs of the swimmers. Our current facilities have bad regulation of chlorine levels. Last year, one of our practice pools' chlorine levels was at 15 parts per million. For reference, anything past nine is considered dangerous. Having an auditorium that is LISD-regulated would help ensure safe chlorine levels and swimmer safety. Another issue with our current facilities is the weather. It is estimated that teams practicing outdoors missed an average of 10 to 14 days of practice due to weather in the last two years. Most weather challenges occur at the height of the season, December through February, and we can't afford to miss this precious time in the pool.
Although not all teams swim outdoors, there are still overcrowding issues at current facilities. For practice, divers are forced to drive to Austin, and tight schedules at existing auditoriums limit times for swimmers. Also, since there are few swim facilities in our area available for rent, having an auditorium would provide an opportunity for the district to rent it out when not using it. Revenue could also be generated from competitions hosted. Finally, it is known that teams with good facilities tend to perform better. At 5A State, only three of the top 25 teams didn't have their own auditorium, two of those being from LISD, proving having an auditorium helps swimmers achieve their full potential. In conclusion, we urge the School Board to seriously consider the needs for an auditorium in our district. It would not only benefit the students, but also improve student safety. Invest in our students' futures and give them the tools they need to succeed. Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. Speaker's number one. Alright, speaker number two.
Good evening. I came tonight, I signed up to speak about taxation, and really to give my citizens' input on the recent bond election. I want to talk about taxation because during the push for this bond, you stated that it was not a tax increase, and you know that's not true. It really is a tax increase. You are spending money in the same way that our federal government spends money. We print it like it grows on trees, which is not true. This is going to come to an end, someone has to pay this money back eventually. It is a tax increase, and even worse, just like the federal government's doing, one of the ways that we're being taxed by this is through inflation. When this keeps going on, prices go up, that's a tax as well. What I'm calling for is fiscal responsibility. Ironically, we would probably not even be having this conversation, but for the past three years, you've been consistently ignoring our concerns. You're spending the money that we don't want to spend on things we don't want you to buy. I'm a citizen, I'm a parent, I'm an active volunteer in this district. I don't agree. I call for fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, speaker number two. Speaker number three.
Good evening, trustees and superintendent. My name is Mike Sanders, and I'd like to say a few words about how we're spending our money here in, in LISD. I recently got a list of all the teacher salaries, all the employees' salaries for the entire district, and I looked at the list of, of different categories of employees, and I found that we have 103 school counselors, full-time school counselors in LISD. We have 42 full-time licensed psychologists on our payroll in LISD, and we have 12 assistant superintendents full-time on our payroll here in LISD. I think that it's interesting that we, that, that our, our administration thinks that 42 psychologists, full-time psychologists are needed in, to, to, for our children here in LISD. And I, and I have to ask the question, what in the world are 42 psychologists doing for eight hours a day with little elementary school children? What are they doing? What is any full-time psychologist, licensed psychologist doing, talking to other people's children without their knowledge or permission? Do they have parents' knowledge and permission? You, you never talk about this. You don't even mention the fact that you have 42 psychologists and 103 counselors on your payroll, and this is a very concerning thing for me.
Alright, thank you, speaker number three. Speaker number four. Speaker number four? Alright, if Dell is not here, we'll move to speaker number five.
Good evening, neighbors and the board. I guess you're flush with money now, that's good. Maybe can build that auditorium that that young lady was talking about. Too bad it wasn't Proposition D, actually, I would have voted for it. Didn't vote the other three. But I wanted to, um, to talk about something else, actually. Elon Musk was on Bill Maher recently, and he said, he liked physics because physics you can't play with, you can't, you can't lie with physics, right? And I was just thinking, DEI is not physics, but it's so easy to convince ourselves, without any empirical data at all, that it's going to do something useful for your student outcomes. And I just wonder what data we have, if any, Bruce, on what we're looking for in terms of student outcome improvement with DEI. If you look at California, probably the ultimate DEI state, they've had absolutely zero improvement since 2010. Their cost per student has doubled, which is kind of interesting, but zero improvement, racial improvement, okay? Fortunately for you, we've been able to, you know, unable to cut the Gordian knot, but fortunately for you, there is hope on the horizon. When I look at AI, this is something you can get behind. We need AI-assisted technology, and hopefully, Anna and Francesca won't go against this this time. That allows individual students to get their civil rights to a good education. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, speaker number five. Speaker number six.
Hello, thank you for your service. And for all the mothers, whether you're of one gender or another, if you're a mother, we thank you and we appreciate you, and Happy Mother's Day this coming weekend. A few things I had not necessarily planned to speak about. The, people don't seem to understand financial and fiscal responsibility. Leander is a growing school district. Leander has a growing tax base. As such, the bonds that were just approved by a pretty overwhelming margin by the voters in our district, we can afford those bonds. Not only can we afford them, we need them. We need to build more schools. The schools need to be safe, they need to be secure, and they need to be modern. As far as diversity and inclusion and belonging are concerned, um, ask Samsung out in Williamson County if they want diversity and inclusion funded in their schools. I guarantee you, they do. Ask Mr. Dell with Dell Computers, and he's a known conservative Republican. He wants diversity, inclusion, and belonging in the schools. So, we thank you, we appreciate you, and Happy Mother's Day.
Alright, thank you, speaker number six. That concludes our citizen comments portion of the agenda. We will now move to our public hearing, federal funds overview and public hearing, and we'll start with a presentation.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Gearing, members of the board. Camille and I are here to give a very high-level overview of federal funds and also conduct a public hearing to seek feedback from our community. And so, the purpose of the presentation is to provide an overview of activities supported through federal funds, seek that input prior to us submitting our federal applications for our federal funding. And so, what federal funds are we talking about tonight? It is the Every Student Succeeds Act, and you can see there Title 1 through 4, as well as special education. Camille will be talking about Perkins, and then we'll do a quick reminder about our SIR COVID funding that we received. You can see the amounts that are listed here. These are our planning amounts from last year. We just received our new planning amounts late yesterday, and so, we will be updating those. The timing is always amazing, and so, we will be updating those and seeking feedback on how we are going to allocate and spend those funds. But this is the money that we are working with this year, and so, we always start there with our planning amounts, planning into the next year, and go from there. So, the development of our federal applications, we have a very specific process that we follow. We always start with collaboration among stakeholders. Some examples of how we get that feedback is through meeting with the DEWIT Committee, and we also have website submissions where, at any time, you can go and provide feedback on federal funds. Those are just a couple of ways that we collaborate and seek feedback on how we spend our federal funds. And there's a, a process through the District Improvement Plan. So, one of the most important parts of the federal funding is that we start with a comprehensive needs assessment. What's the data? What are the needs within our system? And then we develop- And then we develop the programs, activities, and align our staff development to the goals within our District Improvement Plan aligned to our comprehensive needs assessment. We also allocate budget and resources to those, and we make sure that we are using those in an allowable way based on the guidelines within each of the federal funds. There's an ongoing evaluation process. If the federal funds are spent at the campus level, we use our campus staff to help us determine effectiveness. Or the district level, we work to determine effectiveness and ensure that we are achieving the outcomes and the desires that we had in the initial goal through the comprehensive needs assessment. And after all of that, we submit our federal program application, and then we are subject to compliance reports as well to make sure that we are within guidelines. So the first part is Title I, and so this is improving basic programs on eligible campuses. And so these are our Title I funds, as we call them, and the goal of these funds are to increase student achievement, also including family engagement. And a large portion of this goes to our intervention staff. And so those are the allowable ways that we can spend the funds within Title I. And some examples of how we spend that in LISD through targeted activities. Again, that's through parent and family engagement, also homeless supports, and our interventionists. And so parents as teachers, that program is supplemented through Title I funds. For our homeless supports, we have school supplies and hygiene items that we provide to those families. And then again, our interventionists, currently our SRP teachers and our interventionists are also funded through some of this money. Title II is supporting effective instruction. Overall, this is the professional learning funds that I refer to. And so this is all about improving our educators so that they are the most effective for our students and that we are, the goal is to increase student achievement through these professional learning opportunities. Some of the ways that we spend our Title II funding is some professional learning for dyslexia, PLC conferences that we send our staff to, our TI conferences, there's some equity trainings, lots of training opportunities in our system that we fund through Title II. Title III is our English Language Acquisition, Language Enhancement, and Academic Achievement. And so these funds assist our emergent bilingual students to meet state academic standards, and they also work to sustain effective language programs within our system and promote parental, family, and community participation in our language educational programs. And some of the activities that we engage in in Leander are parent outreach and trainings. We have some dual-language training that's funded through the Title II funds. And we have some sheltered instruction professional learning that was funded as well. So overall, these funds go to support our emergent bilingual programs. And Title IV is Student Support and Academic Achievement. Overall, this is providing students with a well-rounded education. It's making sure that we're maintaining safe and healthy students as well as improving the use of technology to advance our student academic achievement. And this one comes with the requirement, in those three areas, we must spend at least 20% in each of these areas. And so in this, it's broken down through STEM instructional supports, training and curriculum for counselors, such as our Second Step, and virtual learning that we had during COVID that we have continued as well, so that continues to support some of our virtual learning.
Good evening. The purpose of the CTE program is to develop more fully the academic knowledge, technical, and employability skills of secondary education students who enroll in CTE programs. Perkins V is a supplemental grant to our CTE state-weighted funding. On this particular slide, you will see some of the ways that we can spend funds to support a high-quality CTE program. In January, we did receive a reallocation which raised our total Perkins grant to $261,000. Currently, we have funds allocated for salaries to support career development and to build capacity with our CTE programs of study. We also have dedicated funds for durable supplies and equipment to support CTE programs of study and build into skills needed for high-wage, in-demand occupations. We also have funds to support the implementation of our college and career development software. As was previously mentioned, we have just received our 2324 planning allocation amount that we'll be working with, which is $252,000.
Our next, let me move the mic back over. Our next one is our special education funding. The goal of our special education funding is to ensure that our eligible students, ages 3 to 21, with disabilities are provided a free and appropriate public education. Salaries are an allowable expense, as well as support and direct student services for students identified in special education. The activities that we spend our funding on, 75 to 80% of our federal funding is on salaries and personnel. Also residential facilities and residential care for our students, some contracted services for evaluations, and also professional learning within our special education grant. And lastly, our COVID ESER funding, ESER I, as you know, is closed. ESER II is about to close, and ESER III, we have one more year, and we're still waiting to hear an update on III supplemental. And as a reminder, these are funding, this is funding that we received to support during the COVID-19 pandemic so that we can support our students for social, emotional, mental health, and academic, any of their needs that they have in those areas. We receive and provide an update every six months for the ESER. There is a link there in the slideshow that takes you right to all of the feedback we've received and a very detailed report on how this money has been spent. All of this information that we've shared today, you are able to find that on our website. And at this time, Madam President, we will hand it over to you.
All right, the Board of Trustees has taken up the federal funds overview and public hearing. We will now invite those who have signed up for citizen comments to comment on this public hearing, to come forward when your number is called. As a reminder, the board is restricted in ways we can interact with you during this portion of the meeting per our board operating procedures and policy BED local. Each speaker has one and a half minutes to address the Board of Trustees, and you will hear a chime when your time is up. Please conclude your comments when you hear the chime. We will now call speaker number one.
Thank you. I reviewed this package before I signed up to speak to give my public comment on this public meeting. And my basic response is, number one, it should be, you should know, I've got kids in my family who are in special needs in this district. There are really good things in this presentation, but my feedback to you is, in order to receive these funds, we talk about all the highlighted good things, where are the strings attached? Are there any strings attached? As you were going through the presentation just now, I took a note. You mentioned that we have to submit reports to ensure compliance. My question would be, compliance with what? What are we selling to get this money? That's my concern as a public citizen. And then finally, one last thing, I noticed on the last slide, what caught my attention there is the ESER funds still coming in from COVID. When I saw that, I thought, don't we get it yet? Hasn't anyone figured that out yet? We're still trying to, hopefully, we're not still asking for that money to, you know, be funded for what pretty much everyone is starting to figure out was a lie. Thank you.
All right, thank you, speaker number one. Speaker number two.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent. Again, my name is Mike Sanders, and I want to speak a little bit about the federal funds that are in this presentation that was given to us tonight. There's a total of 18 pages in this presentation, and out of the 18 pages, there's one page that talks about ESER funds. The ESER funds account for $26 million of this money, and the other funds are a fraction of that amount. So clearly, the vast majority of this money is the ESER funds, but it was only given one page on the slide presentation. And when you look at that one page, there were zero details about the ESER funds, zero. There was just a link to a website, right, and said, if you want to know more, go to the website. So I went to the website, I followed the link, and the website was last updated in August of last year. We were told tonight that it's updated every six months, but it looked to me like it was last updated in August of last year. There's no discussion of how these $27 million will be spent. And so I'm wondering, you know, are we going to use that to provide tutors to students who lost education during COVID time? Are we going to use that to promote, you know, the sexualization of children, which is happening a lot in our schools? What are we going to use these $27 million for? And the details are not in the presentation, and that's what I'd like to hear, the details of the $27 million in ESER funds.
All right, thank you, speaker number two. Speaker number three.
Good evening. Thank you again for your service. And while we deal with our state legislature and Texas not properly funding public education, thank God the federal government is giving our school districts some money. Thank God. My brother is 16, 17 years younger than I am. He is a special needs person. He lived with me when he started school, and this was many years ago when mainstreaming was just starting out. What we do with special needs, special ability people, students, is extraordinarily important. And I'm thankful that you all seem to appreciate that and that the various efforts you take to thank our teachers. I also, though, want to speak about the technical programs. That's going to be increasingly important as we look at different ways for people to get jobs. We need electricians, we need plumbers, we need maintenance people. And they need the abilities, they need the abilities to do that work. Finally, again, thank you for your service. And as we approach Mother's Day, my mother died of that fake COVID. So that's a hurtful comment, but thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Speaker number three. We'll conclude now with board member questions and comments. For our presenters, there were some questions raised. I'm looking at the ESER's funds plan. It seems pretty comprehensive to me, the applications. I'm not sure where there's a disconnect, but is there something else that I'm missing? I see frequently asked questions. I see the plan, the application, all the several applications, oh, several, several applications, because we've had to request a couple of times. The things we've done for the public, public feedback. Then underneath the identified priorities, where each money's going for each of those priorities, what's in our plan, there's a link for each item that covers what's in each plan. And then it even goes on further to talk about each of the sections underneath. So we have like healthy students, healthy schools, healthy community, where the supplemental funding's going there as far as ESER funds, air quality improvements, recess. And some of these items, as I understand and as I'm looking at this plan, were to deal with immediately when the pandemic happened, as far as what that impacts were, what the government, what the state required us to do, the things we had to put in place. And then it also looks like we have additional things in here as we went on with the applications to address what we've been talking about as a community COVID learning loss. Am I missing anything? Is there something else that we need to help connect the dots?
No, that is correct. We are required for compliance to ensure that that is up to date and very public and very transparent. All of the components within the application are outlined very detailed and very clearly at that link. And, you know, one of the examples for learning loss, as that was mentioned, is we pay for student success facilitators for our secondary campuses that are targeting skills that our students need that they didn't learn during that COVID time. And so that is direct academic support for our students, as well as there are lots of safety measures that were taken, filters, things like that that are there. And it is all detailed and all outlined on the website.
All right, board members, any other questions?
I had a question for you. Tonight, there was a comment, we have 41, 42 psychologists in the district. Those who understand special education know we have LSSPs who do the evaluations for our students to qualify them for special education. Is that money, do we pay our LSSPs out of this for special education?
So out of our federal funding, we do pay for some LSSPs out of this funding. And we also pay for the evaluation kits and the, over 1,100 initial evaluations that were completed with almost 700 left for pending. And so they provide direct services for students, both in crisis and part of their individual education plan, as well as through evaluations from parental consent.
And just for clarification for the audience that don't know, that is the process that students have to take. Those LSSPs are bound by certain timelines, and this is what students have to get, go through the process in order to obtain special education services, correct?
That is correct, and we are required to have parent consent for that as well.
And I think I just also want to make my fellow board members know, I appreciate the federal government coming in and giving us idea funds, although I wish it was 100%, not 40%, because our special education allotment has not been updated in the state in over 30 years. So we are dealing with numbers, and that is outdated since 1991. And I'm grateful that we have this money here, because, those that don't know, we are bound by timelines. Our district will get sued if we do not provide the proper services or identify students in the district who need those services.
I just want to thank you for bringing this information. Somebody mentioned our CTE skills and being able to have these trades. I also want to throw in there that CTE also includes innovation skills, technology innovation. LISD is really known for how we compete and how we create robotics. And robotics is manufacturing and innovation and AI and programming and marketing in the technology fields. And Ms. Clay and I were talking about this before the meeting. We had three of our high schools represented at the World Championships this year in those CTE robotics teams. So I really appreciate that. Most recently, I was talking to somebody at an Austin Chamber function, and they were talking about internships and technology and AI, and Leander ISD came up, and he said, oh, wow, Leander ISD, y'all produce like the best robotics teams over there. He said, you know, that right now, he has some Vista kids working in one of his companies in Santa Barbara right now that were Vista graduates, and they're doing internship. So it was just really exciting to hear people from out of the state like recognize what we're doing in this space. So thank you for that support. I know that you have been supporting in that area for a long time, and it's really exciting to see all the developments there. So thank you.
Just have a quick question about the ESER funds. I just need some clarification. You said the information came in just yesterday, is that correct? Was that the one that came in yesterday?
Not for ESER. What came in yesterday was Title I through IV, Perkins and Special Ed.
Okay, all right. And then for ESER, now that we're going into the last year, that's for three and for the funds that are coming in, have there been, looking at the first two years, have there been some reviews to see what's really effective and needs to be amplified and boosted? And what can be changed? Has that been done?
You must be listening in to some of our recent meetings, yes. So that is required. So part of the compliance of how we spend federal funds is we are required to evaluate the effectiveness. And if it is not an effective intervention or an effective tool, then that's something that we need to consider discontinuing so that we are only using federal funds for effective measures. So yes, that is part of the required evaluation component to the grant.
All right, thank you.
Is there any surprise strings attached to these funds? I mean, usually when people give you money, I think you always should be a little cautious, and the federal government is like anyone else.
I am not aware of any surprise strings attached to any of this funding. I am not aware of any surprise strings attached to any of this funding. For safeguard, there are requirements that we must follow for each of the areas for the federal funds. They give us requirements on who we can spend the money on, what we're allowed to spend the money on, and we are held accountable for how we spend it and the effectiveness. And so we don't have to give anything back to the federal government because we have received these funds. We are just required to follow the rules within these funds, and they are to ensure that it is focused on students.
Is there a certain dollar amount per activity that you're allowed to, or is it, you could spend it on one thing if you wanted to, or two things?
There are specific requirements in some. So in one of the title funds that I talked about, there's a requirement of 20% and at least 20% in three different areas. So some of the grants require a certain percentage to be spent on a certain thing. But other than that, as long as you meet those expectations, then you can spend that money however you see fit, based on feedback, based on the needs assessments, based on our goals. And it all has to be tied back to that. But we can spend it on what we need to, to meet our goals as a district.
For Friday memo sometime, will you update the board just on expectations as far as that ESER fiscal cliff that's approaching? Is there something that's phasing out that we're going to need to roll into the budget? Otherwise, things we need to be aware of. It doesn't have to happen immediately, but just as we're getting there, I think that would be helpful for us as we're having budget discussions.
Yes, we have been talking about that as well, and likely we can provide that.
Awesome. Board members, anything else? All right. Thank you so much. Thank you all for all the good work. That is, there's a lot of filing paperwork following up. Thank you all so much for what you do for our kids in our classrooms. We appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to the next agenda item, our consent agenda. Board members, again, this is consent. It assumes that we're, this is something that is quick and easy to move. If you feel that there's a no in here for you, just simply remove it from the consent agenda. We'll vote on the other consent agendas, and you can detach that, and we'll talk about it separate.
I move the consent agenda items be approved as presented.
Okay. I second. I have a motion from Anna, second from Gloria. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. We are entering graduation season, and so we had the first of our graduations. This is actually our inaugural group of Leadership LISD. I say inaugural because this is the first time that we're running this program again in several years, I think five or six years. And so it's kind of like a restart for us. So just a quick shout out to SCR for the great work that they've done in putting this together, specifically Shannon Lombardo has done excellent work in putting this together. We started with about 35 who signed up, and we graduated 31. Now, that's remarkable because this is a year-long program. They attend several different sessions throughout the year. And so it's great that they hung on, they learned a lot about the district, they went behind the scenes everywhere, from school finance to counseling services and everything in between. So thanks to Anna and Francesco who came out to the graduation. It was a super fun event, and so we're glad you got to do that. I want to share one activity with you really quickly that showcases all three of these things at one time, and so I wanted to share that with you. At North Elementary, the librarian Erin Bartley had a couple of kids who approached her, and they said, we would really like to start a chess club. So she said, okay. So she sent out an inquiry to find out if there was any interest in, from the students. And she got about 25 students who said they would really like to start chess clubs. So she did. And every week, she has new players join her chess club. And so there are now up to about 60 players in chess club, including some pre-K students, four-year-olds, who happen to be holding their own. Other members range from brand-new to chess and some relatively advanced students. In fact, we had some who beat some of the adults who might have joined them. And so we're really grateful to Annie and Erin and all the parents who are showing up and helping out with chess club. And so you can see this is a thriving opportunity for our students. This is, chess is a very intellectual activity. It involves a lot of planning, strategy, decision-making, patience, and timing. And so we're just incredibly proud of what these kids are doing. And so you can just see the brain working as they're figuring out, how's this going to work and who's going to do what. So super proud of these students and super proud of our staff who are empowered to do things like this that are just right for kids. And then the way that we reach out to the community and allow them to jump in and help us to create environments where our kids are really thriving. So speaking of environments where our kids can thrive, we want to thank our community for coming out, for showing up, and for letting us know what their will is in the district. And so we had all three of our propositions pass in this election. These are unofficial results. The board will be canvassing these election results on May 16th during a special meeting. But these are the unofficial results that we have of right now, and we just want to express our gratitude for the incredible work that has happened across the district to get us to this point, and for our community coming out and letting us know what their will as they go forward. As I mentioned earlier, this is graduation season, so we wanted to point out that we will be graduating New Hope High School students on May 17th, our 18-plus cell students on May 19th at Vista Ridge High School, and then we have a full slate on May 26th at the HEB Center, four of our high schools, and the last two then on May 27th. This is a super exciting time for us as we congratulate and say farewell to our seniors as they move on to their next step. There will be tears of joy, there will be tears of sadness, too, but a super exciting time. And so here is our class of 2023 Leadership LISD. We have roped several of them into leadership positions and volunteer positions throughout the district already, and we're super excited to see the community impact that they're going to have in our district as we go forward. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. That concludes our superintendent's report. We'll move into discussion and action items, A1, 2022, the 2023 School Health Advisory Council, their SHAC annual report.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the governing board. We've got a lot of people with me tonight. We have our parent representatives who will be presenting out to you. So let's get started. There's a clicker over there. All right. So tonight's purpose is to review the work of our School Health and Advisory Committee for this year, and then also, very important, present each of the subcommittee's recommendations that will be included in the year-end report. So the purpose of SHAC, just to remind everyone, is to make recommendations to the school board on coordinated school health programming and its impact on student health and learning. The SHAC committee does not make policy, they make recommendations. Also, as required by law, we submit a year-end report to the Board of Trustees, who reviews it and instructs Leander ISD administration on any actions to be taken. So it is a parent-led committee, as I mentioned earlier, and we do have a parent leadership in positions as well. Our chair was Joseph Gioro this year, our co-chair was Shannon Mann Butler, and our secretary, it was Kaya Klotzek, and she is going to be getting the microphone handover in just a minute here. As we've talked about previously, these are the different groups of people that are involved in the School Health Advisory Committee. These are the School Health Advisory Committee requirements, as stated in Texas Education Code. Right at the top of the list, like we mentioned already, it is parent-led, and as you hear from each of these people, we are parent and community members here to present out on the recommendations. Okay, I'm going to hand it right over. I can still click for you if you'd like.
Good evening. So as a parent-led, excuse me, committee group, we, this year, met four times, all by webinar, or Zoom, rather, and in 2022, we had a meeting in November 14th and December 12th. Then in 2023, we had a meeting on February 20th, and then again on March 27th. This group was able to come to a conclusion of what the subcommittees would be, and what we did is we reached out to everyone in the community, whether they were a parent, a student, or someone who had affiliation with Leander ISD. And these committees were made up of four different, initially it was three. It was physical activity and nutrition, emotional and social well-being, protection of marginalized population, and then because we had a lot of participants who were very passionate about this topic of human sexuality, we went ahead after the first meeting and we added that in. We felt that was something that, because the community and the parents were so passionate about it and felt so strongly about it, we wanted them to have that included in. So the individuals here with us today are the ones that have stepped up to be spokesperson for that subcommittee. They wanted to go ahead and briefly share because they had met outside of those four meetings. They met together as subcommittees on their own time, volunteering because they felt this was important, as most of us in the community do. So the presentators are going to be as follows. For physical activity and nutrition, it's Darren Uriida. For social and emotional well-being, it's going to be divided into two parts. First one being substance abuse, presented by Stephanie Turner. And then child protection will be Kelly Merchant. The third point, or the third subcommittee, was protection of marginalized population. This is going to be presented by Stephanie Holdren. And then finally, our hot topic, or hotspot, human sexuality, will be presented by Bonnie Artel. So without further ado, I'd like to hand it over to our subcommittee under physical activity and nutrition. Darren.
Is this on? Oh, there it is. So, yeah, thanks everybody. It was a pleasure to serve on this committee in, yeah, physical activity and nutrition. So we kind of started off looking at what had been done previous years and then kind of using the SMART goal approach. And what we decided was, really, let's try to focus on, recommend focusing on one thing. And so we narrowed that down from originally a big net of everything down to nutrition education is something that we felt like could be tackled. So we ended up looking at what's already out there now and then what we could maybe do to enhance what's, what the district could do. So we're recommending doing a needs assessment to be carried out in the 23, 24 academic year to identify the what, how, where nutrition education is currently taught in the district, and then use that needs assessment to identify other areas with evidence-based resources to improve and make quality nutrition education easier to deliver, more consistent and streamlined across the district. And this nutrition information would ensure meeting requirements, but it could include areas that are needed beyond the teak. So not just do the minimum, but is there a way that we could even do it a little bit better? So that was our recommendation out of our subcommittee. Thanks.
Hi, everyone. My name is Stephanie Turner, and we have a very important topic. I believe all these topics are important, but the substance use in fentanyl is very important because it's stealing people's lives and it's creating drug addictions amongst our student population. This is something that I'm very well-versed in, as I've thrown my whole entire life into trying to save children and prevent from what is happening in our nation, especially our state. I wanted to come and tell you all how mad and frustrated I was that my school district that I've been a part of for 14 years, that I've had four children in, still has not brought in fentanyl education. When you have mothers like me and Becky Stewart in the audience right now who've lost loved ones in this school district, teenagers, when we tell you students are using drugs, people reach out to us because of our stories and our experience. So we have been a voice because of our experience. We bring that to you, and we're turned a blind eye, and it's very frustrating. But I also don't want to be angry. I want to be grateful because as a result of this board not bringing in fentanyl education, I've been able to partner with Williamson County Sheriff, Travis County Sheriff, co-host an event with Governor Abbott, speak at Region 13, work with Texas Pain Society, and got Texas House Bill 3908 passed through the House titled Tucker's Law Requiring Fentanyl Education. That's as a result of a lack of what this district is doing for our kids. So I'd like to go on and say what we have came to the conclusion. This has been a frustrating SHAC committee. All of our committee is extremely frustrated. We were not allowed to meet, we weren't given email addresses to communicate, and we had three ineffective meetings, and one great meeting where we were finally able to meet together and come up with these. So with that, we are recommending that all staff have naloxone, which was, is an opioid reversal in the event that a student has fentanyl poisoning. What we know is in six to eight minutes, a death can occur. Our campuses are very large. We cannot have just naloxone in nurses' stations because we know they can't get there fast enough. In addition to that, there's intramuscular Narcan. It's four times faster, or four times more effective, and it works two to three times faster. I've talked to Kristen Wickits about this, and I realize that this isn't something that all teachers would feel comfortable administering, but we believe that all nurses' stations should have this in the event because some of these overdoses slash poisonings will take six boxes of Narcan. So time is of the essence. What happens, the Narcan pushes it off of those receptors and allows the child to breathe. So it's very important. Zimhi is one of the intramuscular. There are also different brands. Naloxone is, Narcan isn't a brand, but there's also other ones as well. So that's our first recommendation. Our second, we believe that a community awareness night would be good. We currently go and speak to school districts all the time with awareness nights and within campuses. I currently have or will be speaking to a total of seven Texas ISDs. A lot of times with fentanyl that I want to point out is parents just don't understand. And so we know we have 43,000 students, and the best way for parents to understand is to give them that education. And it's just, you know, we don't want to be in my situation. I learned what I learned after I lost my son. And we don't want that in our community. We don't want community members to have to go through this. And it's something very easy, just education, communication, spreading that awareness. Explore community partnerships to bring more resources into Leo for students struggling with substance use. Oftentimes, students get disciplined and they go to Leo. That would be a really great interactive time where we could partner with them and explain, but on a better, more one-on-one communication, the depths of it, and real-life stories, you know, like students think not, can't, I heard that happened, I didn't know it was here. I heard fentanyl was lethal. I didn't understand that, you know, until they hear a community member who has passed away. That's really impactful. In 2022, 99% of all pills seized by the DEA contained fentanyl. So that means 99%, 60% of all of those pills contained a lethal amount of fentanyl. So pills are very, very prevalent source of fentanyl, but it's also been added to vapes, marijuana, cocaine. Okay, the next slide. We wanted to explore opportunities to create a recovery high school. We also talked about peer group with that. You know, it's one of those things where kids are struggling, they don't understand addiction, parents may not understand what's happening, and we felt that if there could be some sort of peer group slash understanding where we can meet those students in need, that would be very effective. Conduct assemblies for students with real-world information. Assemblies have been a very interesting, I actually just left dripping. Assemblies have been a very interesting, I actually just left Dripping Springs High School today where I spoke to their campus. And at the end of those assemblies, students are in tears, and they come up and they thank us, and they understand, and they appreciate it. And kids are scared. They don't understand what's happening. They know there's this lethal drug. It's killing kids at rapid rates. It's killing everyone. It's the number one cause of death among 18 to 45-year-olds right now. So we believe that bringing in student assemblies would be really helpful. Currently, Song for Charlie has great curriculum. It's free. You can download it. You can implement it. However, once the bill becomes law, then it would be a requirement for schools to bring in fentanyl education in grade six through 12. And then within our website, we would like to see some resources for people to reach out and get the information. So we think it would be very helpful as a community if we could provide them with information. You know, the school district has access to the most people in our community the easiest. And so we just really want you to take it seriously and not have someone have to die on campus. You know, Hays County and what's happening amongst kids right now, it's very, very sad. And it's far-reaching, and it's forever. So, thank you.
And on behalf of the board, thank you for coming and sharing this information with us. When I quickly looked up the bill as it's moving through, one of the things that's in there is a fentanyl awareness week component. Do you see some of these recommendations kind of pairing with that fentanyl awareness week? Is that what you had in mind as y'all were coming up with these recommendations?
The fentanyl awareness week was because of Leander High School Student Council members that created that, and that's the school that my daughters are in and that my son went to. So that was where that... There's also a fentanyl awareness month, I believe, that I don't think that has gone through the House yet. But HB 3908 is set for committee with the Senate now, so that's looking good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up and say I had the honor and privilege of having a change for cam present at the Vandergrift High School PTA meeting along with a Four Points Middle School PTA. And it was extremely powerful for our parents that were there. So thank you for sharing your story. I'm Kelly Merchant, and I want to say good evening to you all. I had the honor of being on the Subcommittee for Social and Emotional Well-being and the Child Protection of the School Health Advisory Committee. We had several meetings, including some outside of our regular scheduled times. We actually got to meet in person, so that was kind of fun. And we looked at the various curriculum and dug deeper and what, into what we hope for our students of Leander ISD. Our recommendation includes the adoption and continuation of the use of the Second Step Child Protection Unit for our early childhood to fifth graders. We also want to recommend the Monique Burr Foundation Teen Safety Measures for our secondary students. We wish for LISD staff to continue to explore socially-emotional learning and mental health curriculum for all of our secondary students. Currently, from what I understand, my kids are not in elementary school any longer. We are using the Second Step program, and it seems to be quite successful. Parents and teachers have already adopted it, and this also covers our bullying prevention and child protection. We explored the Monique Burr Teen Safety Matters and truly approved all the topics that they covered. There are additional resources for teachers to use, such as NearPods, which I know a lot of teachers use that already. And there are plenty of resources parents can also use, including an app. They also have an extensive curriculum in addition to this teen safety matters called After School Safety Matters and Athlete Safety Matters. As part of the Adopted Substance Abuse Prevention Education Curriculum, which has been addressed, which I'm happy to hear too, our committee's happy to hear, we recommend that the curriculum also addresses the mental health of students. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Holdren, and we two met a few times outside of the scheduled meetings, but we never saw each other from the shoulders down, so. So I'd like to add a word actually to the title of our group. I would like to say protection and support of marginalized populations. And we talked a lot about different groups, and we thought, well, who, who, how do we define marginalized individuals? So we came up with a, with a definition. And first, those who are most excluded and at risk of discrimination. And people can be marginalized due to multiple factors, such as sexual orientation, gender, geography, race, color, ethnicity, religion, national origin, socioeconomic status, or differing ability or disability. And Matt helped us with our group, and Matt and Ches sent out a survey to all the schools, and they compiled this list of inclusive activities and events that the schools are currently doing. And I think this is a great resource for the district and for all the schools. They can reach out to each other and say, hey, we saw this on the list. What are you doing? How are you doing it? How can we implement it? And so we would like to see that list maintained and shared and promoted. And it's also a place where new ideas can be added that, that different schools can check out and implement. We would ask the district to follow through on the Faculty Cultural Competency Survey that was proposed by Dr. Street, I think, last year. Analyze disciplinary data with marginalized students in mind. This includes who is being disciplined in relation to the overall student population, how are they being disciplined, and are the consequences equitable across the student population? We analyzed data from the campus climate surveys. And from that, we came up with three items. First, work to increase feelings of acceptance and belonging among students. Work to improve emotional well-being in school among secondary students primarily. Encourage more advancement, including PACE, QUEST, pre-AP, AP classes among marginalized students, starting in elementary all the way up through high school. A couple of these items I did see on the strategic plan that the district adopted, and so I was glad to see that. A couple of them I spotted in part of the Safe and Innovative Learning Environments, and one was part of the Equitable Access Plan, so I was happy to see that. And we really just want equal opportunities for all of our students, and we want them all to feel accepted, and we want school to be a safe place for all of our students. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Artell, and currently I have a eighth-grade graduating student at Cedar Park Middle School. I came to the Shack with a background in working on the human sexuality TEACs going back to about 2017, I think. So we met, this committee met as a, because this year we didn't review the TEACs and weren't required to make any presentations, but we felt very strongly that we wanted to keep it active, and we wanted to keep it top of mind because human sexuality encompasses every single one of physical, emotional, and community. So we wanted to keep that happening. The Human Sexuality Committee reviewed the Human Sexuality TEACs for grades seven through 12, which would be middle school through high school, and looked across the grade levels at what students were expecting to know in alignment with those TEACs. Additionally, the committee reviewed legislation, which was very interesting, around human sexuality to ensure our understanding of the role of school, district, and parents throughout the process. Leander ISD students in grade seven through nine are taught human sexuality curriculum through presentation by Lifeguard. Is the board familiar with that group? And I just have a quick question, just by show of hands. How many, has the board all read the TEACs and are familiar with the human sexuality portion of the TEACs? Great, wonderful. So when, some of the items that were discussed during our committee was the importance of the parent's role, and we strongly believe that sexuality and education begins at home, and we really want to encourage that. We want to make sure that the health TEACs are aligning with what the state is asking us to teach. And we also looked at the fact that participation in the program, which can be kind of confusing because years before, it was, the way they're doing it now is that the parents have to opt in to, to have the curriculum presented to your child, rather than opting out of the program. And next year, we're going to talk a lot about how that's being presented because I think that it confuses parents quite a bit. When they get the form, they're not quite sure what they're signing and what they're agreeing to. So we're hoping that we can get that cleared up in the district and make that a little bit more clear to parents. Also, we would really like to see more parent participation as the, since the curriculum's being presented currently through a third party, that they, that parents have an opportunity to kind of get into that and come to the school and have some roundtables and be more involved in what's being presented. As the committee looks at the, at the TEACs for next year, we'll be going over, you know, line items and really getting into some of the things, some of the gaps that we see, some of the information that isn't currently being addressed. Just for example, we feel there's a, there's a big gap in terms of gender identity and what, what sexuality and sex really is. For instance, period poverty is not being covered at all, and we're going to really be moving towards some of those discussions. Also, we didn't see anything that reflected the current state of human trafficking and how to recognize human trafficking. For instance, in the high schools specifically, how to see if a friend is being coerced into activity that is endangering them. And other things that we wanted to make sure that are more addressed as we bring these TEACs back up to, kind of up to speed in what we're doing now in 2023. Personally, I can't believe we're still here and that we still are, don't want to have the birds and bees discussion. And I'm glad that I'm here. I hope that, that I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, before we jump off into questions for our wonderful volunteers, and the board is going to thank you, but on behalf of the board, can I just tell you all, thank you all. It takes time and commitment and sometimes trying to get meetings. And if you don't have all the information available, it makes it even more challenging. Thank you all for staying engaged and with it. It makes a difference for our students in the classroom. We appreciate you all. Board members, before we jump into the recommendations, I just have a quick question to ask you all in process. Last time we had Shack present, we said, hey, maybe we should have a dashboard. That didn't really develop, so I'm curious now. We have recommendations in front of us. How, as a board, do we want to ask for admin to help us keep up with how these things are implemented? So it's not like a Where's Waldo of like, oh, there it is, and there it is. Is there anything we think would be helpful as the district begins to work on things? Let me let them ask before you, you, I know you have a great answer, but well, let us kind of go through that learning process there. Okay.
So we do have the updates drafted from last year's recommendations, and we are working with SCR to get them posted to the website. They've had their hands full the last month or two, but we are working some time into the schedule, so we'll be able to get those to you in the next couple of weeks for sure and out to the public on the website.
Well, and I, I think it's helpful as we're pondering, like, how do we follow up? And some things are going to be admin action, admin follows up. There's some things that are going to need to come back to the board. And so it's, I think, important for the board to know which are the items that we need to follow up on and go, wait, we, we need to work on this. Let's work on this. We definitely don't want to let it kind of fall to the side and think, oh, admin's working on that. We don't want admin to think, oh, board's working on that, and something not get developed. So we want to make sure we kind of have that, that understanding what admin's supposed to work on and how board can help, support, or what we need to bring forward.
An idea would be maybe if, like you said, the side-by-side of last year's recommendations, this year's recommendations, and then potentially letting us know which ones might be effective in policy so that we can make sure that we're, you know, capturing what the recommendations are, making sure that we're compliant with TEACs and all of that other stuff, but where, where can we capture that in policy to make sure that we're aligned and doing all of those things?
And I'm so glad you mentioned policy because we have a wellness plan that parallels so much with what y'all said, but is different because it's from 2018. And so I would love to see our Shack be able to update and align. And I don't really know where Shack falls for that and working with the policy community, which part's board initiative, which part we need Shack. But I'd love to see us start getting aligned so we can kind of get some things moving and, and get some alignment there. I think that helps add kind of some of the direction that our Shack's asking for.
I would agree with that completely, and Mr. Evans and I, we're very recently reviewing that policy and looking at how we could partner with Child, you know, Nutrition Services and the Shack team to update that policy, for sure.
Oh, I'm thinking that it might be helpful to do like a who, what, when kind of timeline. So based on what was discussed last year and was discussed today, to come up with a timeline, whether it's, say, July, this particular piece will be completed and who will do it? And then whether it's someone in admin or whether it's the board and who in admin will do it? And then that, just some targets along the line, and that way we can see what's being worked on.
I was, sorry, I was thinking kind of the point person department along the way because I don't know if all of them are, you know, where they're going to be. But I know some of the things that were mentioned, talking about our nurse, right? And there, there has been discussions with her. Where are we at, at that, you know, with that instance? What's the next step? What, what is, what is Nurse Wickens thinking in that space of what we can do, right? And then there's other areas where, you know, as I know, with Mr. Street and the DEI Committee, different pieces that were mentioned, I know have also been talked about with that committee. So I see all these different departments popping up in here. So, and I don't want to wait, I don't want to wait a year to get a follow-up of where we are on those. And so wondering if it's more of, you know, if we can say, you know, you know, whatever you think is reasonable, letting us know, okay, here's the recommendations, and who's the point person for that recommendation, point department? And, and kind of what do we think are those next steps or next conversations or more board direction that needs to happen in some of those places where, when, when it's needed?
And not that I'm super competitive, but there are Shack awards. When I look at these though, and I, and I, and they have like these ceremonies, you can go look at videos, you can see what these Shacks are doing on their district and on their campuses. And some of these Shacks have even started district-wide and then helped inspire campuses so that we get that follow-through. When I see some of those initiatives going on, I'm like, okay, how do we help empower our Shack to get to those next steps? And it's okay if we don't win the awards, but I, but I look at those videos, I'm thinking, okay, what can we do to help support and empower our Shack to get us up to that next level? And so thank you all, board, for having those conversations because I think that's really important of how we empower our Shack to kind of develop these recommendations and follow-through.
Can I just mention one thing? So I think all of those are great ideas, and we can absolutely keep you updated on a more periodic basis than yearly. And as far as the point people as well, some of the recommendations made tonight have been followed through on, so we can give you updates there. I will say that these are recommendations, and so we are looking for feedback from y'all, the trustees, on any actions that you would like us to take because these, again, these are not policy or they're not directives, but they are recommendations being made by the committee. And so happy to continue to work on, on any, any of them.
I have a quick comment. I would like to see some, as we're talking about parent involvement, I would like to see more nurse involvement in terms of, we're talking about the entire child. I'd like to, to get that group maybe talking to the Shack a little bit and seeing exactly where the, where the health of our campuses really lie, and they probably have those answers. You know, how many students are you seeing? How many female students are coming into your office on a, on a weekly or daily basis to ask for period products? How many students are going home hungry? How many student, you know, what, exactly what in terms of the health of our campuses? I think that that might be a good liaison for us.
Who is the third party that's teaching the human sexuality to the TEACs? Do you know?
It's called Lifeguard, I believe.
Lifeguard?
I was just going to recommend, it was really hard, once we got assigned into our subcommittees, to find any form of communication. Who's the list? Who's in our subcommittees? What are the email addresses? Reached out to Mr. Clark, well, they don't, they didn't give you permission to contact them. Well, they, we signed up on a committee, so it took three... So it took three meetings before we were able to even know who was in our committee and be able to communicate on email addresses. And that to me was like, and they had to give approval and then there's all these blind copies and it felt like pulling teeth the whole entire, like the first three meetings were totally pointless. There was nothing accomplished. It was the same conversation. And, you know, this is, we volunteer this time, we carve it out of our schedule, we have our kids, you know, showing them to the kitchen, we'll be, dinner will be on soon. But like that, it just seems like if we go to a committee, why can't we get working in the committee, especially when we only have four meetings?
Have you been able to do any assemblies against fentanyl use at LASD at all?
With Leander ISD, through their student council.
Just through their student council?
Through the student council. And then PTAs, yeah, we have PTAs, Young Men's Service Leagues, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts. I mean, people are reaching out within our community on a weekly basis.
How big are those assemblies generally speaking?
You mean within the school or?
Like population, like is there 50 people there, is like 100 people there, is it a thousand?
It just depends. Last week I was in Lakeway and we did a parent night because they couldn't find time to get the student, because it's kind of like the end of the year right now. And there was about 50 people. We did a parent night in Dripping Springs on Monday and there was maybe 20, so not as many. But that's something that I believe through communication and, and awareness efforts can be televised, you know, amongst our district in a better way. And with planning ahead, in community events are, are very busy and just the school, the school assemblies are the most impactful when those students are in the stands. You know, the, we had a videographer there and the kids weren't on their cell phones. They were watching, they were, had tears in their eyes and it's not a scare tactic, it's to let them know the dangers. And so they're, they are effective and they do hit home with kids. Thank you.
All right, board members, any other questions about the recommendations?
I, I do, I have a question. Can we go to slide 12, please, about child protection, social emotional wellbeing? So I'm curious, I'm curious what other materials are given because I see Second Step Child Protection Unit for early childhood, grades through five, and then the Monique Burr Foundation. For those that don't know, we have a local organization here, the Williamson County Children's Advocacy Center, and they provide these trainings on how to protect our students. They also provide trainings for sex trafficking and it's all grade levels. And I know Georgetown ISD utilizes them, so does Taylor and Settis-Hatto ISD. Again, all free services to our district. I'm just curious, were we giving any of those options that were available to us locally? Is that something that the Shaq committee talked about?
So, yes, we, we, we did. And of course, there's a lot of outside organizations that do that support and whatnot. We, we actually went through, looks like one, two, three, like seven different programs that we found online and searching through and pulled their curriculum and everything else. But we did talk about those outside organizations that are local and how they can support. We didn't, we didn't go through all of those to make those recommendations, but we did discuss those and we thought those were good resources also.
So was there any resistance in the committee as far as perhaps bringing in those outside local resources?
Not at all, not from our, not from our little subcommittee.
Okay, that's because, I mean, we have a, like I said, great organization that provides services already to our students because I think my concern is putting extra work onto our counselors. And, and a matter like this, I mean, we're saving children and we need to make sure our children are protected fully. And why not let the experts come in and answer those hard questions? And so I just wanted to get some clarification on that before I start going down that rabbit hole.
No, I think, thank you for bringing that up because that is one of the things we did discuss, having outside organizations come in and assist or just do the programs too. So that is certainly not off the table at all from our subcommittee. And one of the things we also joked about was the fact that the TA doesn't require any minutes for health curriculum. And so it seems like, you know, and I know this is not your problem, but it is an issue that, you know, we're kind of piecemealing counselors to bring them in to teach. And, you know, there's two counselors to an entire school, you know, an elementary school. That's not enough, they don't have enough time to go through all of this in-depth of these teaks. It, it's a lot of teaks.
It is, and I, I, I agree with you on that. I think that's my main thing right now because of whatever we can do to prevent a child from being hurt, that's the first step right there is educating our students. But not only that, we mentioned parent sessions, there's parent sessions also that are incorporated into that. So I just wanted to get the feedback and the vibe from our committee and if that was an option, perhaps the board can go forward with.
I would say from our subcommittee, absolutely.
Awesome. And I just wanted to say also, Ms. Turner, I have been following your bill. Just think you keep advocating like a mother, that's what I tell everybody. And I'll be watching your bill and see what happens.
Since we're on this slide, I do have a question about the committee's work exploring SEL mental health outcomes. We talked about second step curriculum. And I'm just curious, did y'all talk about, because I've had some parents talk to me in that same breadth of talking about, you know, SEL curriculum, also talk about mental health, first aid trauma, first aid trauma for our kids, looking at ACEs? Can you tell me a bit about kind of where y'all went with that as a committee or kind of what things came to the surface in that?
So I'm going to have to also agree, it was kind of hard because we were separate subcommittees. And if you notice, like our last thing on our slide was addressing mental health and our substance abuse because we didn't get a chance to like come back together as a whole group, discuss, okay? So our group, I mean, it was hard for us because we were like, oh, we got a kind of a big thing here because we talked about human trafficking also. I cannot recall if Monique Burr has the human trafficking, but I believe that it does. And as I said, the teaks are so, is so big for K through 12, it's, it's kind of crazy. So our mental health was more aligned with the child protection, like the bullying and the online. We dabbled in a little bit of the gang violence, but again, you're piecemealing things out there and you're, you have to go and look for the, the, the application, the program that does gang violence. So it was really tough for us, I'll be very honest with you. And I, that was one thing that I struggled with. So if we do have somebody in here who wants to write the curriculum for health for Texas Teaks, you will make a lot of money. I hope that answers your question.
Well, it, it does, it tells me there's more questions. But I, I think y'all, y'all got us to a next step. And what I'd like to do is, if the board's willing at a future meeting, is to have some of that recommendation on, brought back to us to further kind of explore what does this mental health first aid look like, professional development for our teachers? What does this next step of SEL curriculum in our upper grades look like? And, and what are some recommendations there? If we can kind of pull some of those pieces out that they started and pull that back to a board at a later time, I think that would be very helpful.
Thank you all so much. I have one more, I have one question. So thank, thank you very much for all your hard work. And I just have, I've been, from what I think I heard, it's, you would like to improve the group or cross-group collaboration. The other thing that I seem to have heard was that you mentioned that for the Child Protection Unit, you had the opportunity to go research and recommend other sources. But Stephanie, I had spoken to you before and it looked like that was not an option for the fentanyl part. Am I correct? Because it seems like, on one hand, sometimes with the committees, I hear people want to do more and bring more sources, but then add, or, or on the other hand, it's admin says, here are the sources and work within those sources. So was that some kind of tension or frustration or situation that you experienced being, being restricted? Or it, for you, it looks like you were not?
We were provided like a long list of things to look at, but I, I would say our committee was really good about trying to dig even further. I know I spent time outside researching further and that's how I discovered that there's really truly no one-size-fits-all health education book to cover all of these topics. So I didn't feel restricted. I do, I do say that a lot of the information was provided to us from the, from LASD, but it didn't prevent us from digging deeper and looking into other things.
So I would like to defend at least our subcommittee. So we, I, I, I don't have any complaints about how ours worked. We had each other's email addresses. So I didn't feel any tension, any constraint with our group. And we, you know, Matt and Chess, who worked with us on most of, most of our meetings, were very open to if we, you know, if we found something over here and we wanted to bring it and talk about it, you know, they were very open to that. So, you know, but then maybe since we experienced differences among the different subcommittees, there's room for improvement to, you know, let's, let's have a consistent process. How, how is this going to work going forward?
We had the fentanyl committee when we first started, it was titled fentanyl, and then it got like pushed into drug curriculum. And we were like very heavily pushed to bring in nicotine and alcohol. And we were over here saying, we really want to focus on what's killing our kids right now. And that was a frustration for our committee. It felt like we were being told that we needed to make a curriculum for all substances. And we, as the committee head, I reminded them that we are the Shaq committee and we were focusing on fentanyl.
Well, thank you all for, for coming out and sharing with us. Board members, can I just encourage y'all to go through those recommendations? And if you see something that you, you think, oh, that's a board-level discussion, we need to dive into it, please reach out, let Cindy and Dr. Garing know so that we can start setting something up on the agenda if need be. And then we'll continue to follow up on recommendations and see where administration's going, who's in charge of what. So that'll help us kind of follow these as they move along. Administration, I know, has been listening as well. And obviously, it sounds like some of our subgroups had different experiences and we want everybody to have a positive experience when they get and they, you know, volunteer their time as much as possible. So if y'all are, I'm guessing you're going to do some type of feedback to all of our committee members, get results back on like where we can improve, we do want to continue to improve this experience. And then just let board know kind of where we landed as far as what decisions y'all, y'all do. And if there's something we need to do to support y'all, just let us know as we keep moving forward.
Perfect, thank you, Madam President.
I have a quick comment. We'd love to have a board member come to our Shaq meetings.
Okay.
I would love to be there. The first meeting we had, I didn't understand why we're still doing meetings over the phone. We need to have meetings in person again, plain and simple.
Our one in-person meeting was way more effective than any of the others.
Well, you can actually see someone face-to-face and actually ask questions to get answers within seconds. So we need to stop the phone meetings and have meetings in person.
We actually ended early, we were like, oh, well, that was easy.
Matt, can you explain, because we're required to have a board member on that committee and we did, you were the appointed Shaq board meeting? So was he not invited or, or, I mean, what happened there?
So Mr. Gautier.
Whoop, my, but Mr. Gautier was at some of the meetings and I'm not sure, I wasn't really keeping track of which Zooms he was jumping into, but he was definitely there for a number of them, if not all of them. We, he did get a very late invite on the very first meeting. And so we also agree, we want, we didn't, we want to stop doing it on Zoom. There was some convenience relative to the need to record all of the, all of the minutes of the meeting and, and so we have saved those and so we can download all of the meetings to the website. We can figure out how to do that in small groups as well, moving forward. I, that's the only meeting I have left on Zoom and I hated it as well. So we're gonna, we're gonna stop doing that.
But our board member representative was invited to those meetings?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, board members, that concludes this agenda item. We'll go for one more and then we're gonna take a break. The next item is student experience discussion of Leander ISD programs. Do you want to take a break now? You sure? Okay, all right, here's what we're going to do since, since.
While they're set up.
Oh, go ahead. And we're not going to take a formal break. Yeah, okay.
Let it go while we're setting up.
Yeah.
If you want to go, yeah, put, while they're setting up.
As they're setting up.
No shopping, it's not a bad time.
Okay, we're taking, y'all, we've got, we are going to be here till midnight, maybe 1:00 AM. That's what I was trying to get us to do.
Yeah.
So.
But we need quorum.
We need quorum and we don't have quorum here. Trustee Gautier, can we?
Shadai.
Yep. All right. And thank you so much for everybody for speaking and we appreciate y'all. And let's go. And y'all go ahead and kick it off. Thank you.
So I'm back, Madam President, thanks for having us. I am joined by Dr. Carleen, our Assistant Superintendent for Pathways and Innovation. So the purpose of the presentation tonight is to provide the Board of Trustees information about the current programs that we do have in Leander ISD and then contrast them to schools of choice. I want to keep in mind that the information presented this evening is the current state of programs in our district with the understanding that options can and do change as we continue to make sure we have a wide variety of programs on our campuses. Our goal tonight, and I feel bad about continuing when, no, I, I want to make sure you're okay. I don't, okay. Our goal tonight is to provide the board with information that you need to, to help us determine the parameters and guardrails that we would consider when developing potential future schools of choice. The parameters and guardrails would ideally provide us clarity and clarity for the community without constraining ideas and innovations. So tonight, we're going to talk about three different categories of Leander ISD programs first. We're going to talk, and I'm, we'll provide details about each one in a moment, but we're going to talk about unique campus-based programs. We're going to talk a little bit more about CTE programs and which you've heard about tonight a little bit from Camille. And then we will talk about school-wide programs. So we're going to start with unique campus-based programming. Now, for these programs, they are programs that are found within one of our existing schools. They are initiated as a campus and district partnership and they're not offered at every campus. So on the right there, you see some examples of unique campus-based programming that we do have in Leander ISD. Dual-language programs, IB diploma programs at our high schools, and then our early childhood communities found on some of our campuses. Those would be examples of unique campus-based programs. Dr. Carleen?
So as Matt said, we were looking at different types of programming and how to categorize them. Our CTE programs were kind, we decided to put them in a category to themselves because they are unique in nature. And so as you may have seen this, this slide before in a previous presentation we did for CTE, we have 38 programs of study within our district. And within those programs of study, we have 193 courses that are supported within our CTE programs. And so what does that look like? And how do we define those programs? So Camille spoke earlier about the Perkins Five Grant, the federally funded piece that helps supplement our CTE programs. When you look here, the Perkins Five Grant very specifically spells out what programs of studies are. These programs of study are reviewed and defined by the state. And so they continue to review those, they will update those and they will let this, let us know what those are. But they do give districts the flexibility in which programs of study that we can offer, which schools we want to offer them at, and then also what courses that we place within those programs of study. So they give a variety of courses that would fall within there and then we get to choose which ones make the sequence that we offer at the different courses. So on the next slide, what you see here is just a snapshot of the program. Remember, there were 38 programs of study, you see five here because it was going to be really hard to show you all of them on one slide, so we took a snippet and then gave you a link to the rest. If you look here, this is our career cluster of STEM and you see the five different programs of study. What you notice is that two of those programs of study are offered at all six of our comprehensive high school campuses. If, I'm going to use the example of the programming and software development, app development, which is the Mobile Maker EDU, this is part of Uncharted Learning. What you will see there is we have it at Cedar Park, we are going to implement it in the 23-24 school year, both LA more of a holistic approach. And so it's, it's part of the Uncharted Learning, which is also has Incubator EDU. Those two campuses where you do not see Mobile Maker have Incubator EDU, so we have Uncharted Learning at all six of our campuses. In some other cases... EDU. So we have Uncharted Learning at all six of our campuses. In some other cases, you may see some programs of study being at very specific, only a couple of campuses. A lot of times what determines that is the very specific facilities that are required to hold those particular courses. They can be very unique, very specific. And so we have to consider those as we build the schools and the cost of that and the maintaining of that. One thing I do want to highlight, I know later on in our meeting today, we're gonna talk about rezoning and some conversations there. When we look at these programs, one of the things that also impacts the programs that a campus can offer is the student size and enrollment. And so sometimes when campuses lose students in enrollment, now we no longer have students to take the course or the program. And so the programs no longer make, or we lose the staffing. When we do things like a rezoning activity that might increase the population at a school and help them maintain and not decrease in enrollment, it could allow a campus to maintain their current programming and continue to build their programming from there. And so those are some of the unique things that we just want to make sure that we all consider as we're partnering with our campuses on what programs they offer, what we can offer, and how we help them adjust when needed.
So then the third category of Leander ISD programs that we're gonna talk about today are those school-wide programs. So these are campus initiatives, and students automatically participate when this particular school-wide program is at their home campus. So we have a list of school-wide programs over there. When you think of like our elementaries, our two elementaries that have the IB primary years program, every student that is zoned to that school is a part of that program. Leader and Me, when a campus adopts the Leader and Me program, they are a part of that program. That avid demonstration school, Vista Ridge High School, when they became that, part of being at that demonstration school is the idea that those avid philosophies, avid instructional strategies are immersed and a part of the entire campus culture. So not only do we have all of that programmatic choice in our district, we also provide a wide variety of choices at the course level. So just like Krista mentioned earlier, do we have students that want to take the course? Do we have a teacher to teach the course? All of these things need to be taken into consideration when we are looking to offer the widest variety of courses to our students. In some instances, as we have discussed a little bit earlier with some of our specialty courses, we may have situations where the student interest is there, but we can't locate a qualified instructor. So the course doesn't make, meaning it can't be offered on a campus. Now, in some cases, we do have the ability to partner with campuses to survey our students and families in preparation for the following year. And then, you know, if there's continued interest, we can start that recruiting early, and we can redouble our efforts to bring back that course offering the following year. So that all kind of leads us to this question. If we have so many programs on our campuses, why, why schools of choice? Well, it started back in the spring of 2018. And I know you've heard me tell this story, so I'll keep it short. But we were getting feedback from students, parents, and community members about courses and programs that they would like to see LISD offer. So we developed a committee through DEWIC, 70 members. And over the course of two years, this Program Advisory Committee continued to gather feedback, continued to study workforce trends before making recommendations to the board right before the pandemic. Now, with this board's strong commitment to voice and choice, we've continued to study different ways that we can meet the needs of each and every student in our system.
So what you see here is the definition of schools of choice that we've been using to guide our work since the Program Advisory Committee. So when we had that in 18, 19, 19, 20, we had a small group that worked specifically on schools of choice, because that was one of the ideas coming from there. We knew we needed to define what that meant to guide our decision-making and thought process. And so this is what we've been using so far. And so like we said, like Matt said at the beginning, we want to get your feedback on these parameters, or if there's additional parameters we need to consider as we continue to move forward. But in addition to this definition, how we categorized our current schools of choice in Leander ISD was dependent on the following criteria as well. So we also looked at, so what you'll see here is our schools of, current schools of choice, they each have a unique campus code for themselves. There is a student, currently a student application process to get in. It becomes the student's home campus. So the student is not passporting between campus. They actually, this becomes their home campus. And then there, it's a district initiative. And it's a district initiative because there is interest at a district-wide level. And so we're trying to create some choice and some options for our students across the district to attend these campuses. So currently, we have three schools of choice in Leander ISD. We have our Early College High School, which is in its legacy class this year. We have our Virtual Learning Academy. So as we know, that started out as a need from when we moved to virtual learning through COVID. We have found that there are students within our district who are still finding that as a need. I believe you all received some really cute little yearbooks not too long ago from our virtual learning students who are thriving in that particular program. And then we have our New Hope High School, which has existed for a while to support our students as they move towards graduation and post-secondary. So again, like Matt said, so why schools of choice? What does this look like? And why might we want to continue to look at more options? And so we do provide a wide variety of options within our district now. Things that schools of choice can provide that aren't just around the programming, but it's also around the small school setting. So like an Early College High School, it will max out at 500 students. You may have some people ask, well, that's such a small population. Why would we consider that? However, you have students in our district who want that small population because you get to really build a cohesive family unit, and that they prefer a smaller school. And so that provides an option for them. Another reason, or another advantage towards a school of choice that a student might want is the core, you get your core classes through the lens of a program. So what that means is, let's say there was a program through the fine arts, or the program through the STEM, then your English and your math and your science and your social studies could take the lens of that program as it's being taught. And so it really is a whole comprehensive approach that student interests there. And then it allows students to focus on their academic interests. And what we mean by that is, we've heard from some families that the extracurricular activities that we currently have in some of our larger campuses are just not something that their child is interested in. They would really like to focus on the academic piece and then have the option to grade the clubs and the extracurricular activities that are of interest to them, that might be different than what we have there. And so this would just allow us to provide that option for our students and families in the district who are interested in that. And so as we talk through and compare about all, look at all of our programs, talk about our current schools of choice, what could be, remember that this was where we are, snapshot in time, right now. These are what the current parameters that we've been using. And then we are also in the process with Long Range Planning Committee, with a subcommittee of creating a policy for schools of choice. And so what we really are asking for you all with that too, is what are those guidelines or parameters, like Matt said, that would allow us to clarify this for the community, but not constrain the innovation that we might need to use, or you would like for us to consider as we move forward with developing some drafts to be able to bring to the board, subcommittee, and to you all as well.
Board members?
A few questions here. When you say that that becomes the student's home campus, does that mean that they will get transportation provided?
So it doesn't mean that specifically right now. That's one of those parameters that we're asking you for. So if that's something that you want us to look at, access through transportation, then that would be something that we would take back to consider when we're looking at the policy. Currently, well, virtual learning, the kids don't need transportation. It's at home. We do provide transportation for Early College, and we do provide a way of transportation for some of our New Hope High School students as well. But if that's one of the parameters you would like us to consider, access with transportation, then that is definitely something that we will take into consideration as we continue to work through that policy.
Okay. And when you talk about Early College High School and New Hope High School, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I see those two as they focus on the academic interests because they don't have access to, or they're really not interested, they might not be really interested in some of the other activities, like sports or some fine arts on the general campuses. So not just a small size, but in addition to that, the focus on the academic interests.
Correct. And so that's where, when you bring, you can have an opportunity to bring some like-minded students around the same interests, who also, it's not just, it can be their academic interest and their extracurricular interest, but their extracurricular interest may not be what we traditionally see in a larger comprehensive school. So you're right, those students now have the opportunity to develop what those are around their own needs and interests. And then they can continue to change and develop as you bring in a new class. So you may, we're gonna have another class of Early College join us next year. And so then they will have input too on what that can look like.
And then one last one before I let others. You mentioned Leader and Me on page eight as a school-wide program. My understanding is, I don't know if it's changed, but the schools, the schools, the PTAs have been funding those. So if you're going to list it on the district's list, is the district gonna pay for those?
So I think that's another thing that we can take into consideration with those parameters. We listed it currently because those are programs that some schools are, and rightly so, very proud of that they have. They are being funded as their PTA. I think those are conversations that, as we categorize this, is that a parameter that we want to put, that we only want to list and discuss those that are funded through the general budget within the district, or within district funds versus the PTA funds, and those would not be necessarily included on that list. That is definitely, funding could be a parameter that we could also use.
Quick question about, Shade, were you done?
I was just saying, thank you.
Okay, okay. I know that one of the subcommittees for Long Range Plan is schools of choice. And so I know you've got this separate committee that was formed prior to COVID. I want to make sure that we're not working in silos. So are they talking to each other? How are we gonna bridge that gap?
So that when we had the School of Choice Committee that was prior to COVID, and even we had the committee that was, came up with the seven types of schools of choice. So we have that committee. All of those discussions, forums, presentations are all kept in one drive. We're working out of that drive too for the School of Choice Policy Committee so that they have the history. We have everything together so that we make sure that it's cohesive and that it's not bits and pieces. What you see here with our presentations, and, you know, why did we include some in some areas? Why did we include some in other areas? Remember, all of these came on board at different times within our district. And right now, what we're looking at is trying to make a cohesive view of our district and the programs and schools that are available to them. And so we're gonna have to talk about what those parameters are, what we want to include and what we don't. And so as we do this work with school of choice, we wanted to make sure that it was cohesive, that we, everyone had the story so we could include all that.
Okay, perfect. And one other thing I just wanted to mention is, I know when you talked about the STEM, and you had the Mobile Maker app, like at Cedar Park, but we had Incubator at Vista Ridge. And I want to just give them a shout out, because what they ended up doing is collaborating together. And some of the Vista kids would go over to Cedar Park, and they had an idea, and they needed programmers. And so they used the programmers at Cedar Park, and they came together, which was amazing. So big props to those kids for figuring it out and coming together and doing the work. So it was great.
I want to kind of chime in on the transportation piece. I really would like us to think about that transportation piece. I know on the bond, you know, we put in, one of the items on there was that South Transportation Center. When I was visiting some other schools in El Paso that kind of do schools of choice, they have these transportation centers where students go to the transportation center, and then from there, kind of get redistributed to their program of choice. Another thing I had a question about, I know when the, you know, when we were originally talking about, these are the types of schools, the one that rose to the top was, at that time, was the STEM school. And I know we hadn't said where, where these programs are gonna be, but we do know that Vandergriff has like the biggest robotic center, you know, in, of our schools. And so I wonder in areas of where it needs to be a school of choice, and when it can just be an open enrollment for that program so that it doesn't need to be a separate school of choice, but it's just, you know, an open enrollment into Four Points Middle School and Vandergriff High School, especially since those are schools that we know that we wouldn't mind increasing the enrollment. But, so how is that being factored into our discussion of what type of school of choice and things like that?
So when we're looking at the policy, what I want to make really clear right now is, we're not on the part of where we're digging into what school of choice would we make right now. We're really looking on how to provide clarity to the community about what we mean about schools of choice within this particular policy. And so some of the different districts that we've looked at have different types of schools that they've defined. So when you talk about what's open enrollment versus a choice school or a school of choice, they would have a definition for each one of those. And then you would be able to say on the website, this particular school is an open enrollment school. This particular school is a school of choice. And people can then see that and understand through policy what, how we're defining that within the district. So right now, that's the level that we are considering. So I did write down open enrollment, because that is something that, as we take back to policy, we're gonna discuss all the different types of schools that we want to do, which ones we want to define in policy, and as to possibilities to bring to you, to you all for discussion. So thank you for that piece, because that's gonna help us. But we, yes, those are, those are some of the pieces that we're working on, how to define different areas.
I think also based on our recent discussions with our community, I don't think schools of choice have to be entire schools either. I think they can be parts of schools that could be repurposed for a specific use. And so I think there's a lot of conversation still to be had about what, what that could look like.
I just wanted to piggyback on that STEM school. We do have an elementary school, Comacho, that is a certified STEM school. Are there any steps being taken to revive that or bring that back to the school?
So we're always working with our principals and our staff there. I know as it started as a STEM school, it's what's next. And so how do we continue to support that work? And so as we think about what they want to do, we've had change in leadership there. We've had new teachers there. We've also had the community there. And so it's, what are the programs that we can provide to bring that back strategically? And so some of the things that we provide within our district right now, what I mean by that, and how we're working with different campuses, is this summer, we'll have our Deeper Leading Institute. This is where we work with campuses to really come up with a multi-year plan for strategic scale-up of deeper learning within their campus. And it's a multi-year plan. So within that, that's where we could, and could work with that campus on what could that look like to bring it back strategically so that we have a plan for professional learning. We have a plan for supports for our students and staff and our families of what that could, how we could, how we could bring that back.
Krista's rocking, but I do have something to add super quick. So this summer, you've heard about our partnership with the Thinkery, and we offered the Thinkery Summer Camps last year. This is our second summer offering them. They are being held at Comacho Elementary for exactly the reasons you were bringing up, as we kind of revive that idea of that STEM education, actually STEAM education, and then also have an offering up north that includes families in need. They provide, we work out our, part of our partnership is scholarships there as well. So shout out. I think there's still some spots left for the, there's seven weeks of Thinkery Summer Camps this summer.
So there's that saying, there's an app for that. Well, sometimes there's a program for that. It seems like in the education world, there's so many different programs. And there are fabulous options out there to nurture and cultivate students. One thing I'd like to see as we move forward, I'd like to ask our committee to look at though, are we able to make sure we're getting to every person in our student population? So that you might have a passion, you might love, you know, healthcare industries, and that's growing. And then all of a sudden, then there's this other event you can do, and we're growing all these programs, but that's going to one certain student population. And so I'd like us to think about what are our student populations that aren't getting covered in current needs as we continue to expand our resources. And a small thing I'd like us to think about too, as we're doing that, is going back to the curriculum deficit audit. Yes, I will be scarred with that forever, is in that curriculum deficit audit, we got dinged heavily for developing programs, but they didn't see where we were aligning it to our curriculum are for a reason. And as a result, EH Local was developed. And in EH Local, there's a part in there where the superintendent is supposed to bring us an annual report on program evaluation data, using measurable criteria, illustrating revision or termination of programs based upon student results and district priorities. And I think with our strategic plan in place, And I think with our strategic plan in place, we have some very solid district priorities. The board, the district, our community, hopes and dreams we're behind. And so there's some real alignment opportunities. I'd like to bring back EH Local policy just to, one, get us revised on our curriculum of like what, what those are as well as this specific part of it about the measurable. Is that okay?
Yes, I want that.
I had a question regarding New Hope High School. That's one of our existing schools of choice. And because it is, it was listed in the bond as one of the repurposed projects, but after we retooled that, and that's going to be more of a community discussion now, I know that we're involving the communities with the schools that are affected. I just want to make sure that the New Hope High School community will also be included in that process, even though it's not necessarily their building that will be affected. But are they going to be involved in that process whenever that starts?
I would say absolutely, that's going to be a community that we include. It's a unique community, but it's one who I know the students want to be heard and the parents want to be heard so that their needs can be met as well. And so yes, that would be something that we would, that we would definitely get feedback from them.
Y'all did excellent. Good, good conversations, good start. We'll go ahead and conclude that item. Do we need our five-minute break or did, are we just going to, okay. Y'all just get up if y'all, if y'all need to and hustle back. We'll go on though, keep going through our meeting. We're going to go to our next agenda, item 1083. Student Experience Discussion of Leander ISD Mathematics Initiative.
I always get the lowest chair too, but um, so we're getting the presentation going up here in a minute. And hello again, everyone, Madam President, trustees. I am joined here by our Chief of Schools, Dr. Sarah Grissom, for this presentation. And also I'm happy to say as an equal partner with teaching and learning in the development and support of this LISD Mathematics Initiative. Yep, so that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I'll take it. All right. Okay, so what we have seen with our data, and we've had these discussions here in the boardroom, is that our, coming out of pandemic, our reading achievement levels are at or near pre-pandemic levels. But what we see that has not yet returned are our math achievement scores. And when you look at comparative districts and STAR and also looking at our MAP progress and growth. And so being dissatisfied with that, we embarked on a prototype of how could we think about supporting student learning, especially in math differently? And so in partnership with our Teaching and Learning Department, we identified four campuses for some targeted professional learning. And there's some details there, so really intense professional learning around curriculum, but also best math instructional practices. And then with that, we were able to embed a math curriculum specialist on each of those campuses for one to two full days each week, where you had classroom observations and feedback loops, modeling of instruction, and that job embedded just in time, professional learning to support what was happening in the afternoon sessions. And so through all of that, what we saw, the results were promising. So here is just a snapshot for growth in third grade. So this is beginning of year MAP data to middle of year MAP data. And what you see is a percentage of increase in students on grade level. So you can see that very first bar is for the district, so it's all of our districts at third grade. And you can see Campus One saw that increase in growth for students on grade level in third grade. And then you see that other campus, second campus, you saw even more. And then third definitely is a standout there. And on that fourth campus, we did still see growth in students, but just not necessarily at that same level. So we started looking at, so what can we learn from this? What are the takeaways? What, what happened at one particular campus versus another to really see how then could we expand this? And that's what we're here to talk about tonight.
So the LISD Mathematics Initiative takes a two-pronged approach. We know that any initiative around math, looking at the data, is going to have to address the needs of all campuses across our system. This initiative does provide a foundational level of support for all of our campuses in a systematic way that we maybe haven't been able to do in the past. We'll describe a lot of those details in just a minute. This plan also accounts for the fact that some campuses need additional levels of support in order to ensure high-quality Tier One math instruction is a guarantee for all of our students and families. So here's kind of the overall, we'll go over each piece in, in a level of detail. But for now, you get the general idea. Again, like I mentioned, Tier One is that system-wide, every campus guarantee foundational professional learning and then support. Tier Two, this relates to campuses needing additional targeted support. And then for those few campuses, Tier Three, where the needs are, they need the most support in terms of embedded wraparound support in order to work towards achieving the goals that they have for improving math achievement on their campuses. So we're going to start out with Tier One and go into some of the details here. So in terms of system-wide professional learning and training, this will happen during District Professional Development Days that you've seen on our adopted academic calendar. For Year One, the system-wide professional learning will focus on all elementary teachers who teach math in grades two through five. It will also have a sixth-grade math focus and an Algebra One focus for that Year One. In Year Two, Year Three, we will adjust the FOKI and continue to work on that system-wide level of training. Now kindergarten and first grade teachers will get a level of training as well, as will seventh and eighth and other grade levels. But this will be a more intensive program of system-wide training. Also, we're going to provide four additional meeting times for Algebra One PLCs during the year to get together and collaborate and plan and do that data analysis. We're going to utilize and leverage our, our master teachers through the Teacher Learning Leader Program that we have sent you some information about previously. They will support the effort by working alongside district staff to develop and facilitate professional learning. They will set up model classrooms. And as you recall, this program, the Learning Leader Program, is an opportunity for our best teachers to be encouraged if they don't have to go to administration, into administration to earn a little bit of extra money. And it also helps us train the entire system in, in a way that reflects best practices. One of the other pieces that is an important distinction from some of the things we've been able to do in the past is to guarantee scheduled bi-weekly meetings with math specialists on each and every campus. They'll be getting into PLCs, they'll be, you know, collaborating with the ICs, doing coaching, walking classrooms with, with administration if desired. We understand that even campuses that are doing fine, just like our students that are doing fine, need support, needs coaching, we are all lifelong learners. So as far as professional learning, that will also be extended to our district and campus leaders because, so that we're all on the same page about what the teachers are learning and what to look for and support them on in their classrooms. And finally, quarterly feedback loops. This is going to be super important as our campus staff become really well-versed on our math curriculum, on best practices around Tier One math instruction, that we have these feedback loops built in throughout the year so that they can keep us informed about their perspectives on the curriculum, on the resources that we have, and also on the training. So we can be in, you know, part of a continuous improvement cycle. We got to work together to make sure that we have the best possible Tier One instruction happening in our campuses. So when you look at Tier Two, it's all of, it's kind of this thing, all, all of this plus, so all of Tier One, plus similar to the prototype you heard about that we've been engaged in this year with, with amazing success, a math curriculum specialist on campus, one to two full days per week, doing those things I mentioned, getting into PLCs, collaborating, planning with teachers, modeling things in the classroom, really working alongside the teachers. Not in an evaluative role at all, in a supportive coaching role. We've gotten quite a bit of positive feedback from the teachers and the principals of those four campuses in the prototype this year about the relationships and trust that have been built that drop those defenses and allow for the real capacity building to occur with our teachers on those campuses, which resulted in those outcomes that Sarah talked about earlier. So finally, you look at Tier Three. Again, it's all a Tier One, plus it's that embedding of a math curriculum specialist on each of those campuses identified for Tier Three, basically full-time. We put four days a week to allow some collaboration at the district level. It'll probably be around 4.5 or four and a half days a week that that math curriculum specialist will be on campuses, get, working with the principal, the IC, getting into the PLCs, all the PLCs, and just working with that campus to improve math instruction. As well, in partnership with our special programs, they will each have a math co-teacher embedded on those campuses, working in classrooms in grades four and five. So that's the overall model. Now, you're probably thinking, how are you going to do that with your current staff? So let's talk about positions and funding. So a perfect night to present on this because you just heard about federal funds and the different title funds. This is an opportunity to provide some additional detail about how we would propose to use title funds or how we are going to use title funds in the year upcoming. So in order to provide that embedded support on Tier Three, Tier Three levels of support for some campuses, Tier Two levels of support for other campuses, and then that system-wide support, we are looking at nine additional curriculum specialists. We currently have six math specialists in teaching and learning. So if you think about six math specialists and our 40-plus campuses, we have not grown in that department for quite some time, and we're not asking to permanently. We are, what we're doing is bringing in these curriculum specialists through federal Title II funds, which as I know you know, Title II, speaking about the guidelines around utilization of certain monies, Title II is for training and professional learning, professional development only. So these curriculum specialists will be functioning in that role of providing training, be embedded with professional learning and just-in-time collaboration pieces on one-year contracts. One of the requirements of using federal title funds is written into the contracts that it be a period of one year. It can be extended, but depending on, Title II is a relatively stable funding source. Sometimes Title One in particular can fluctuate, so it is a requirement to be on one-year contracts. Also, we'll be funding the Teacher Learning Leader Program again through federal Title II funds. And the, the number of teachers that we'll be bringing in for that is flexible. This will be an extra-duty pay situation. And then co-teachers, right now, we are earmarked with five, and those are being paid for out of ESER funds. So that is a rapid-fire run through the LISD Mathematics Initiative, Year One program for next year. And Sarah and I are here to answer clarifying questions.
Board members?
Okay, so math is my jam, you guys know that. So the other day, Trish and I got the opportunity to meet with Alicia and her team to have our curriculum meeting. We had to have, have it rescheduled a couple of times because it's a little bit crazy right now. But I just want to say, this has me so excited. The fact that we can see the MAP data, we can see where the growth is, we can see where the spots are that need help. It's almost like a, I was kind of trying to describe it to a friend the other day, and it's almost like a rescue ranger kind of thing. You're sending them in there to do their thing and, and help these teachers and really kind of use our curriculum and use our writing documents. And I'm just so impressed with the whole idea that this is brilliant. So thank you all so much for, for doing this. I know, you know, math, math is one of those things where, as we know, during COVID, you could sit and read your kid a book, but you're not going to do fractions. So I'm really excited about this. I think this is going to be great for our teachers, especially our new-to district teachers who are just getting used to our curriculum, you know, maybe understanding, you know, looking at a bridge's lessons, you know, like this, this part works really well or this part doesn't. But again, it depends on the kids in your room. So I was really impressed with it and just so excited about this whole thing. So great job, team.
So I have a question. I also thank y'all for sitting us down and explaining it. I really appreciate it. What triggers that intervention for that campus? Like, is it half the campus failing? Is it parent-led? Is it the principal-led? Like, I'm trying to understand, what does that trigger in there to signal that they, that campus needs intervention and need, they need the help?
Yeah, so I'll start and then you can add on. So we are waiting for end-of-year data to identify which are the campuses that would be at Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. And that is something that we will sit down with our Teaching and Learning Department and area superintendents, looking at what do we know about the campus, what does the data say? And also looking at, how many new teachers are we talking about? I think that that definitely is a factor in this as well so that we make sure that we're targeting our campuses in the right way. And then also looking at how, and this was a great question. We had a meeting with our principals this week who were saying, okay, so this is great. We love it, we're excited, but what happens if we start and then all of a sudden, in mid-year, we see that there's a need? And so we're talking through, what does that look like? How do we continue to monitor throughout the year so that we can make adjustments as needed as we have more data coming in?
So that's also my next question. Y'all mentioned you rolled it out to our principals. Can you give us some, what they said, were they happy? I mean, I, I'm just curious because at the end of the day, it's going to impact their campus, right?
We were all there.
Yeah, I'm happy too. So, thank you. So what I would say is that for our prototype campuses, as we were talking to them, they were like, okay, so what's next? How do we expand this? They loved it and saw their teachers thrive and students thrive through this. And so that was so exciting. And then also, we did meet with principals as we were talking through all of this. Lots of great questions, people who are very excited. They're like, okay, when do we find out? How do we know? What are you going to be looking at? People are ready to hire. I mean, so there, there's definitely excitement about it. I think with anything, you're just also wondering, okay, where are these specialists coming from? Are they coming out of my campus? What's the impact there? And so we talked a lot about, one, is that we are, it's going to be open to internal and external candidates. So if there are internal candidates, we are, one, going to look at minimizing impact to a campus. We also will not pull a teacher out of a classroom until there is a suitable replacement for that, that teacher. We are definitely not going to let a campus start with a vacancy because we're trying to do this plan. So, so those were definitely some pieces that we talked about. Anything that I missed?
That was beautiful.
Okay.
We talked about EH Local earlier. So when we bring that back, it would be, this would be a fun example to put with it to kind of parallel of how the curriculum's moving, what is, what, what's the information teachers get? How does all that kind of plan, what's administration doing? So that may help.
You know, I think you're absolutely right. And I know we both worked on that policy together. And we did, there's that clear delineation of the responsibility for implementation of curriculum for the campus administrators, the district administration, the teachers. And so it will be fun, at least for you and I, to talk about how that, how this program or how this initiative will really kind of meet the spirit of, of that policy.
Great. And when we bring back an update on this program in a year, I know we review MAP data, but can we review it specifically with this program when y'all bring an update on this program in a year?
For sure.
Okay. All right. Board members, anything else?
Oh, that was actually going to be my question about the four campuses. But how, how did you pick those four campuses? And also, I, I also need to clarify the teacher learning leaders because it says extra-duty. But I thought the explanation you gave was not extra, it was like that was going to be their full-time. I, I might have missed something.
So I'll, I'll address the second question and then maybe we'll tag team on the third, the first question. As far as the learning leaders, the curriculum specialists that'll be embedded on campuses, those will be full-time positions. So they, if it was a current teacher, it would be somebody that would not be in the classroom. The learning leaders are teachers that will stay in their full-time teaching role, but will also have but will also have the opportunity to participate in additional trainings to become even more qualified, but then collaborate outside of the school day in most cases, collaborate with the district team in the development of the professional learning, and then in the delivery of professional learning. They'll also receive extra-duty pay to set up their classrooms, specifically to be model classrooms. We talk a lot about giving people the opportunity to go visit classrooms, and this will be a real systematic way of identifying the people that have the model classroom, and not just how the classroom looks, but the instruction that is happening in the classroom so that we can send people over there. And we have a person, people who are ready for it and are getting compensated for getting all that extra traffic into their classroom. I don't even remember the first question. Oh, how do we identify the four campuses? I think we look, we look at academic achievement data from all the sources we have access to, and in particular, relative to mathematics.
All right. That concludes this agenda item. Thank you so much. Board members, we are going to go, it is 9:01. We are going into closed session for purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and our attorney-client privileged matter, Texas Government Code 551.072, deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. There will be no action taken in closed. We will always be open to take any action if necessary.
Board members, it is 9:18 and we are back in open session. Do I have a motion from closed?
It's right before the board meeting debrief, 12B. I move that the Board of Trustees of the District approve a resolution to establish procedures for bona fide voluntary purchase negotiation and alternately authorize the use of power of eminent domain if necessary to acquire fee simple title to a 75 acre parcel from property owned by Roy Cuchara and Alice Cuchara located at 7650 RM 2243 Leander, Texas and required to construct educational facility and related aperturances and public use purposes.
I have a motion from Christine. Is there any second?
A second.
And a second from Gloria. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes, any nays? One nay. Motion passes. All right, we'll move on to our next agenda item. 10B1 Governance Discussion of Secondary Schools Attendance Zoning Recommendations.
All right. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Gearing. We are here tonight to give a recommendation on our report for the secondary school attendance zoning that we've been engaged in for the past five months. And so what we'd like to do tonight is give you a quick recap, present our recommendations, kind of let you know what all we've done since we last saw you on March 23rd, and then we'll be back on June 8th for an official vote for, from you. So, just a reminder for everyone who's watching at home and for our Board of Trustees, this is the process flow chart that we utilized for the secondary school zoning. And we started way back there in October with this process and have worked ourselves all the way through decision points, re-releasing another zoning, going out to the community. And so just a reminder that this is the process that we have been following for the last few months. So, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Carrier to give a little bit more.
Good evening, Board. So, again, what we wanted to do is just make sure everybody's just up to speed on the work that's already been performed. So, we're going to talk about kind of where we started, where we're at, where we're going through this. You're going to see several timelines as we work through this. So, as Dr. Otterbury said, in October, the Board was, or the Long Range Planning Committee was established to see what other options we had available to maximize the utilization of our schools. And that was following the failure of the previous bond. And so as you can see in that timeline, Board wanted to go ahead with that, so they all approved the charter. After that, Scenario 1 was released. We'll talk about that in just a little bit. We collected some feedback from Scenario 1, and there were many, many different feedback channels used. And again, we'll show you that in some of the subsequent slides. We met again to utilize that feedback and actually develop Scenario 2. After Scenario 2 was created, we brought everything back together, reviewed more feedback, because again, this is going to be a long-term community discussion to make sure that we land in a good place. And so then again, on March 23rd, we gave that update to the Board on the secondary school zoning process. I got the clicker, sorry. All right, so what we wanted to do is really make sure that we capture that community input. And so the next couple of slides are really going to show that. So, before I talk about the dates and everything that are listed there, let me show you, let me kind of explain what's on those wall anchors there. So, what we wanted to do is we wanted to make sure that every single person that wanted to provide any kind of feedback whatsoever had the, not only the option to do it, but we were making sure that they were heard. It's one thing to sit there and talk to somebody and us gather that, but things get lost in the shuffle. You talk to multiple people. So, what we wanted to have is a very concrete form of that collection. So, one of the tools that we typically use for continuous improvement are plus deltas. And so on those, each one of those anchor charts, you'll see plus deltas. And then we also ask for ideas and questions as well. And so those that couldn't attend also were able to provide their feedback via thought exchange, let's talk, they could send emails, a lot of different methods to be able to collect all that data. So, as you see on those forums, we wanted to make sure that all of those forums made it accessible to all. So, we wanted to make sure we had them north, south, and everywhere. We wanted to have them at different times. And we also wanted to have a method, again, that they could provide feedback on a 24-hour basis should they choose. So, this is kind of what those forums look like if you didn't have the opportunity to attend some of those. I got to go to some of those, and let me tell you that people showed up and they were ready to talk. And that's exactly what we were there for. And so it was good to collect all their data. So, some of those sample questions that got submitted by the community were, when would it go into effect, right? Why were these neighborhoods chosen? What other options do we have on the table? And the community really wanted to know, do y'all actually listen? I mean, is this going to go somewhere? Is it just going to go a pit and then y'all are going to do whatever you want to do? And so I can tell you firsthand after watching this process that all information that was gathered is absolutely considered. And we've seen some of those considerations in the alteration of some of the scenarios. So, specifically, I talked to, at one of these meetings, I talked to a lot of the folks that were in 1205. And so they said, well, you know, what else can we do? And if you'll notice that our scenarios now have altered that based off that community feedback. And one of the biggest components of that simply was, we don't want to move twice, right? We would like the neighborhood to get established. We would like to have stability. And if we're slating High School 7 up in that area, can we look at something else? And so absolutely, we took that feedback back, beat feedback to the group, and we were able to come up with other scenarios as well. So, these themes were discussed the last time we were together in the board meeting. So, these aren't new. But what we did is we took all of that feedback and developed these specific themes so that we kind of had guiding principles going forward to make sure that nothing was overlooked. After that, we started meeting again, and we've already presented to the Board on some of this. But this is all the work that has actually occurred since March 23rd. So, we, I've already presented some of the recommendation, or some of the feedback at the prior board meeting. And if you scroll down there about in the middle, May 11th, well, that's the day. We're doing the recommendation report presenting to the Board. And we're going to discuss the details of that report on the next few slides. Before we do that, there's a little bit more though. So, after all the feedback was received, the Long Range Planning Committee met on April 17th. And about four days later, three or four days later, we got everything published online. That's where we also have that feedback button and some of those other components that we reported on last board meeting. Because again, we're trying to make sure that we can capture community feedback without them having to dig to give it to us. So, whenever we met last time, we had all of that feedback that we've talked about for the last few slides posted up on the wall. We performed a gallery walk. And then after that, we disseminated that data. And we were trying to figure out, using a consensusgram model, which is one of our continuous improvement tools, to determine the appetite of the Long Range Planning Committee, do we need more feedback? Do we need more data? Where are we landing currently with these scenarios? And how confident do we feel in the recommendations and be able to move forward? And as you can see within that consensusgram, very high consensus on it. We also asked if there were any outliers to provide that, so we may be able to address any outstanding questions prior to moving forward, just to make sure that everybody was on the same page.
Okay. Now, you can see in our process that we're in step 11, which is to present the recommendation to the Board tonight. Okay, so, we will be presenting our recommendation and implementing Scenario 2 for the high school and middle school campuses. And so when we look at this chart here, what I want to do is, one, you know, just refresh, the goal or criteria that we used in developing these scenarios was, you know, trying to maximize stability for the families and students. And then also look at maximize the uses of our facilities and then also defer any long-term, you know, construction of our facilities, try to defer the construction of facilities. And so those are things we tried to consider as we built these scenarios. In this, on the middle school, right now, if you look at like Leander Middle School, the light blue, you can see the dark blue line going through it and going down by Run and Brushy. That's the current boundary of Leander Middle School. All the blue lines are, the dark blue lines are the current boundaries. And so when you look at Leander Middle School, for example, you can see we're taking part of Leander Middle School and moving it to Run and Brushy. And you can see from Danielson, we're taking all that light blue from Danielson and moving it to Leander Middle School. So, that sort of gives you an idea of, you can see the moves at the campuses. And so when we do that, we, you know, we look at all the numbers and then you can see down in the little red circle, all those moves take place for the 24-25 school year, with the exception of those two neighborhood codes in the circle. Those are actually going to move, we're proposing to move those in the 28-29 school year. Part of that reasoning is because of the spike trying to stabilize Henry Middle School numbers over the long term. You know, they have a, with them going, it actually creates a huge spike. We had a lot of feedback. Your increase in the capacity, or the enrollment at Henry Middle School, quite large, over 1,600 kids the second year, and that's a huge change. And so by pulling that out and then also looking at, you know, phasing in by the, allowing eighth graders to stay at their existing campuses, it really does balance it. So, if you move to the next slide, now you can see on these tables here, the goal is really to remove the blue shaded boxes as well as red shaded boxes. That was the goal. And you can see, previously, we had Danielson and Stiles that were in red. They got to just under 2,400 students, Danielson did, and Stiles would get to just under 2,100. Now, you can see how the numbers have really stabilized at that camp, those two campuses. But then also, you can see where Henry, where they were at 1,600, if we moved everybody, you can now see it's a lot more stable and manageable for Henry Middle School. It really balanced it. And in the yellow boxes, that's when the 1,700, 1,710, I believe, would move into the Henry Middle School and come out of Stiles, because Stiles was getting a little larger. And so it pulls Stiles down, but also now stabilizes Henry also. And so, and so you can see that. I just want to make sure. Now, on the feeder pattern, you can see what the current feeder, or the proposed change would mean to the high school feeder patterns. And you can see, we have four schools that would have split feeder patterns. We currently have two. And the result is, of course, it'd be Run and Brushy and Wiley. When you start moving that number of students, you end up splitting. In a perfect world, we'd have one middle school to every high school. But it just, with a fast-growth area, it's hard to do that. Over time, you might be able to reduce those back down. But this is just to show you. And one thing to point out, you can see the numbers from the feeder patterns. You know, one thing we looked at is really working to get the cohorts not to be very small, you know? Some people will tell you, oh, that's too small. But, you know, our smallest cohort is sitting at 220, I believe, 252 students. And so that's not that small. We've had a lot smaller over the years. And so this, we tried number of exercises to satisfy everybody. Like Clay said, we really looked at all the proposed solve, you know, solutions. And what ended up happening, we had smaller cohorts. And so this was what we determined to be the best way to go and why we recommended Scenario 2. On the high school, of course, when we looked at it, it's the same philosophy, but our capacity is at Cedar Park High School. And so what it does is, you've got to pull around from Vista Ridge and Leander down to Cedar Park. And on the long-range planning, we looked at actually taking more from Vista Ridge and less from Leander. And of course, we had a small cohort. But what happens long-term, it actually, Cedar Park starts dropping again, and they need additional students. Vista Ridge is getting too small also, because we pulled more from them. And so we actually, that's why we ended up grabbing more out of Leander in the Treviso area to stabilize Cedar Park and allow Vista to stabilize long-term. And so that's was the key component of that move there. And so we did the same thing. You can just see the various moves that we've done to try to do it. And when you look at the next slide, of course, you can see the numbers really do stabilize. You know, our biggest, one of the big concerns we heard at the high school was Cedar Park jumping 700 students. And so when we look at, you know, with the phasing in, basically ninth and 10th grade will move, but then your 11th, 12th graders have a, you know, choice to stay. But in our numbers, we have estimated 75% of juniors will stay at their existing campuses, and 95% of 12th graders will stay at their existing campuses. And that's how we built these tables with the numbers. But by doing so, you can see the numbers really do stabilize and keep them pretty stabilized long-term. And so...
So, that was a lot of information and details on there. For anyone who's looking at home, all of this information has been on the website since it was shared publicly. So, feel free to get a larger map that you can zoom in on. So, we didn't expect everyone to look at that one. But part of our community forums and feedback we received from the community, we had a lot of questions on transfer exceptions and then athletic eligibility guidelines. And so we were, again, trying to be very transparent. And so we posted some documents out there. Shortly after, on April 19th, we posted some information out there about what we believe will be the recommendations, obviously pending your final approval of the zoning scenario. But what, exactly what Jimmy just said, we understand the continuity that happens in a certain campus. And so while a zoning can be disruptive to that, sometimes they just can't be avoided. So, we're going to try to minimize that impact where possible. And so as you see on the screen, eighth grade, 11th grade, and 12th graders would have that option to remain at their current campus, assuming they went through a couple of steps providing a transfer request, and then of course, providing their own transportation. And then of course, we have other exceptions for siblings, because we don't want parents to be traveling to two different high school campuses to drop off their children. So, those are things that we want to consider. All of that is available on the website. We do know that some of our athletic eligibility is driven by the University Interscholastic League. And so sometimes we have ability to adjust that and other times we don't. But all of that is also on the website. So, we've been collecting feedback on this since April 19th, and appreciate everyone who has sent in a let's talk. We have reviewed every one of those and then sent them back out to the appropriate department, whether it be athletics, or fine arts, or student services. And so some of the main themes that we've actually looked at are questions from families who have children at the elementary level, the middle school level, and the high school level. Again, just wondering how is it going to impact drop off and pickup and impacts to those specific families. We had a lot of questions about athletic eligibility, and Coach Lamb and Coach Horman have been helpful with those, getting parents that information so that they can make those decisions. And then we actually, a theme that popped up from this that I thought was interesting was comments from parents who have older siblings, say, a high school student who has a great relationship with either a coach or a director, and parents wondering about the impact to younger siblings who also have made a connection. So, I thought it was just a testament to our coaches and our directors of, if you're in a certain band program, if your sibling is in that, even though you may be in elementary school, you automatically have that connection. And so we just want to remind parents that we have outstanding coaches and directors and teachers on every single campus. And if your child is rezoned to another secondary campus, they will get the same connection there, just with a different director. And so we know that that might be a little bit hard, but I promise you, our coaches and directors will take care of them. And then this was actually really exciting. We got a lot of thank yous from our community. So, thank you to our community for thanking us for this process. It's not often that we receive a lot of positive feedback in situations like this, especially zoning. But we did get a lot of appreciation from the community for the transparency of the process. Many of them saying, while I may not love it, you listened, you heard me, you sat down, you walked me through it. And so just a lot of thank you from the community for this. So, again, final decisions on transfer exceptions and athletic eligibility will be made when you make your final decision on June 8th. So, as a reminder, we are on step 11, which is June 8th, Board to approve the middle school and high school attendance zones for the 24-25 school year. And then again, these would be implemented in August of '24.
Board members?
A few questions about feeder patterns, because we've talked about whether we have true feeder patterns or we don't. There was, I know that we did get some communication about wanting to keep the Treviso, like Run and Brushy and Leander High School, or Cedar Park, Cedar Park. But it looks like it's still, it's split. So, it's Run and Brushy and Cedar Park High School.
Yeah, we looked at that, sort of what I talked about. When you, if you leave Treviso at Run and Brushy, then now you have a small cohort going to Cedar Park High School, because we don't have enough capacity at Cedar Park Middle School to move them there. And we don't, if you put them back, then Run and Brushy is going to be overcrowded, or we're going to have to shove everybody back up. And so it's domino effect. And it's a challenge. It's just the, Treviso really stabilizes Cedar Park High School over the long haul. And that's one of the things we looked at, trying to get Cedar Park so they're not back down to 1,500, 1,600 again. And it really, you can see the numbers, they stay in that 2,300 range a lot. And so that's why we moved Treviso to there. But we can't get them into Cedar Park Middle School because of, it just, you got to shove everybody back the other way. And so it throws then Henry off, and then we have to put everybody back to Stiles. And so our overcrowded campuses are at Stiles, and then we have capacity at Wiley. And so it's, that's the hard part. We tried, we had many communications... at Wiley. And so, it's, that's the hard part. We tried, we had many communications from several of the families out there, and we tried every option they put on the table to us. We ran scenarios and tried to find a good solution. And this, in our mind, in our judgment, was the best solution that we, for the entire district, not just Treviso.
I had a question. I know we are moving a significant, not significant, about what, 300, 400 students into Leander High School. During this master plan, we went over details and specs, how a lot of the classrooms at Leander High School are smaller than our high schools we have. So, how are we going to handle those extra students, knowing we don't really have the space in Leander High School, because the classrooms were built smaller, because codes were not what they are today?
The class-
And did we, did we take that into consideration when we were moving those extra students into here?
Yes, yes. We did talk, talk about that. They have some smaller classrooms, but they have more classrooms. They have smaller, but a higher number. And so, from a scheduling, it's more challenging. There's no doubt about it. They've had more students at that campus before. And so, it's doable. It's just, it's going to be some, you know, growing pains as they go through. As we get into the true, you know, the phase one is primary athletics, and so, we're not into classrooms. And then, I know as we get into the future phases, there will be portables on the campus to displace. We know we have to put, just like we're doing at Cedar Park High School in Vista, we've got to move people into portables to modernize those campuses. And so, we have a plan. It's just, anytime you do construction, it's disruptive on a campus. And we tried to consider it, and we, we feel that it can be accommodated.
I, I think also, that's my concern, because I did bring it up in the master plan, and he kind of, the architect or architect guy was like, I don't know what you're talking about. And so, I'm trying, I just, I think my concern is, is moving more kids into there when we're going through this master plan renovation, where we already don't really have the space, and we're going to cause more chaos and put more portables on there than we can handle. So, that's just some of my concerns I have with that. And then, my other thing is, you mentioned traffic and stuff. So, neighborhoods, Palmeira Ridge and Bryson, because they're both one of the split offs that go, they don't go to Danielson, they're going to be driving down to Wiley. And so, one of the barriers that some of these parents are going to have, me including, is driving from Glen, dropping off a child, driving down to Raider Way, which is already going to be a mess in itself. We know they're starting construction. So, I'm just curious, how are we going to balance, I'm going to be honest, my child's probably going to be late. Like, I'm just trying to curious, like, how are we going to balance parents with students that are having to travel, you know, from Glen down to Wiley? Because, I mean, I've driven it now, and it takes me a good 25, 30 minutes. So, I'm trying to figure out the logistics of that and just, because those are some concerns I've heard from individuals in this community.
Well, I know the traffic, there will be construction, no doubt. And, I mean, in some sense, it might flow out better by forcing everybody one way. You'll have continuous, hopefully, traffic going out. It's not all coming back. And so, that's what they're, there in their mind, it's going to help traffic somewhat, because you do have everybody going out this way and out to the access road, instead of down to the intersection. And the challenge, of course, will be coming into the school. It, that's, you know, in the morning, everybody has to come off of Crystal Falls, one way or the other. And so, the signal light will be adjusted to accommodate the traffic, is what they've told us.
I, I want to just chat later about that, just because I was in those meetings with the City of Lander that went with Rouse, and just trying to figure out, how can we get help more, more with student safety and crossing and stuff? Because it's going to be, it's going to be crazy. It's one way going in. And so, I'm just trying to figure out the logistics and adding more students and parents and drop off and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, we absolutely recognize the, the growing pains of, of this move at both sides, at both Leander High School and then at, at Rouse High School as well. And we have to try to balance the long-term benefits of what we're doing as we've laid out in the long-range plan, in terms of, you know, the goal of this rezoning is to push high school aid off the table entirely, which is $500 million. And then, to push out high school seven as long as possible, hopefully till 2029. But in order to do that, there are some growing pains that we're going to have to go through as we do the, as we do the construction and the re-master plan at Leander High School and, and the zoning.
I just wanted to say thank you first. Jimmy and Marty sat with me for over two hours and answered an obscene amount of questions and went through, this is a process. There is so much of this that people don't see. And it was incredible to watch how y'all do this, and what goes into it, and all the scenarios that aren't here, that everything had to go through. And I appreciate the amount of feedback, because I've been in this district for a while, and I've seen a lot of rezoning. And I, what I haven't seen is this level of asking people what they want, what do you need. It's not going to be a great process for everybody. It can't be. But I do really appreciate the phasing that came in the second half of this process, because that's something that made me feel a lot better, especially with the LHS campus, because it was a lot more kids going in there originally. With the phasing, that was cut almost in half. And for Cedar Park High School as well, because that community was really concerned with upping the numbers by 700. So, I just wanted to say thank you. I saw the immense amount of work that goes into this, and I appreciate everything that y'all did to get so much feedback and to talk with the communities and make sure that they were aware of what was happening.
Did you, just clarification, did you say that there will be portables added to Cedar Park High School as part of this process? Did I hear right?
No, I think, I think what he said was, as part of the modernization process that's in the bond. Because as we're doing those modernization projects, we have to move students out of wings of buildings at a time in order to go in and do their work. Because if we do it only in the summers, it takes too long. And so, we'll be moving kids out of wings, but it has nothing to do with this attendance zoning process.
Okay. I'm just curious, is there, is there space for portables when that's going on?
Yeah, we've looked at different options. And, you know, from a security standpoint, we're looking at one thing, we'll potentially be building temporary parking to displace current parking, to get the portables closer to the building, just for safety reasons.
All right, board members, there's no other questions. Thank y'all so much for your work.
Sorry, I have one, one last one.
Okay.
I think I've brought this up with you before, and it has to do with classroom size at Glen, since they're more adjustable or flexible. Are we looking at something comparable or something similar to what Anna had talked about with Leander High, or the older schools having smaller classrooms? Are we looking at the real capacity for them to operate with more classrooms, like to condense their classrooms and generate more classrooms, as opposed to dealing with fewer classrooms?
The way we looked at the master plan, it's not detailed into specific little things, but we allocated the same square footage as Glen classrooms within to build their capacity identical. And then, we laid out the plan. And when we bring it back, you'll see how, you know, there are some additions that have to take place also to get all the spaces in, but we'll bring that forward. The actual detail, but I can tell you, what we did calculate in was the same square footage as Glen, as far as classroom size, to get them equal in that and try to have the same parity across their spaces. And I do want to say one quick thing. I know, I want to thank Marty O'Neil, you mentioned it. She does an amazing job behind the scenes with all this magic. And so, I just want to make sure she gets her credit, because she did, she does a fantastic job. And she, I drive her crazy, but she spits it out and makes these maps and get, allows us to try to solve all the feedback we get by trying different scenarios and looking at different things. She allows that. So, I appreciate her very much and want to thank her.
Well, thank you. And yes, we're very appreciative of that, of your work, Clay, Laurlyn, community. It has been a process. But I also feel extensive as far as listening to the community, trying to take what feedback we could, implement in areas where we can. There's a lot of positive things. Yes, though, there's still this growth where you're like, would rather see everything work out. If we can't get it all, how do we balance? And so, I do believe that's what we're at, is we're trying to figure out this next step. So, thank you so much. Board members, between now and our next meeting, when we're supposed to vote, if you have questions, please, please, please reach out. That'll help our next board meeting. All right, yeah. Okay. Thank y'all, thank y'all, thank y'all so much. Board members, we're actually a little over halfway through. And I don't think we would be nearly to this part if you hadn't had done your homework and were prepared. It's always so important to do that for the meetings, and I do thank you for that. Without further ado, we'll move on to our next item, legislative priorities, discussion of the Texas Association of School Board Tasby, 2022 to 2024 advocacy agenda resolutions.
Thank you, Madam President. Tasby annually calls upon school boards to submit new advocacy resolutions that will help form their response to issues before the legislature and other governmental entities during the legislative session. I know we're not quite out of this one yet, but we're already preparing for the next biennium. So, this will be for the '25 session that starts in January of 2025. These are due to Tasby by June 15th. And so, we have opportunity to approve any that come forward from the board on June 8th. But we will have to do any of that approval out on June 8th. We have reached out to cabinet members and asked them to provide any thoughts that they have on advocacy resolutions. We got some feedback already and, and gave it to the legislative committee. We would ask that, we don't spend a lot of time talking about this tonight, but that if you have any thoughts or ideas about items that you want to turn into advocacy resolutions, if you'll just send those to me or to Cindy, and then we'll make sure they get to the legislative committee, and the legislative committee will work them into full resolutions to bring back to you on June 8th for submission to Tasby, if the board approves those. Anything else, Madam President?
I would just add that, thanks so much to the legislative committee for all your work and intentional discussions. This is the first year that we've been able to actually think ahead and ask cabinet, what do they see? And we hope to continue kind of that work of reaching out and even going out further to principals, as we're developing, and teachers, as we're developing, and students, as we're developing our legislative priorities. So, this is that start. And I know it's like, my goodness, we're still not out of session. We're already talking about the next one. But it is important to think ahead so that you can plan properly. I will also note that it might not be unheard of to see special sessions. And you're, you're not supposed to echo those words while you're in this stage of session. But if that would occur, if something like that happened in the fall or the summer, whenever, having these ready would also help facilitate conversations, not only with other school districts, but for our board. Remember, our legislative priorities are ones that we adopt. Those are the things that give us the ability, when we go talk to our lawmakers, to say, our board supports these efforts. The form is there. Please utilize that form when you do submit your comments and suggestions. It helps make it easier for your legislative committee to work through those parts. Okay. All right. We will try, as legislative committee, to bring stuff back to the next meeting to discuss, so that we can vote by the June 8th meeting. So, okay. All right, we'll go ahead and move on then, to continue discussions of the Texas Association of School Board Tasby Comprehensive Policy Review, Policy CCA Local through DNB Local. And board members, I'd just like to tell you how much I really appreciate the policy committee and, and our chair, Gloria. I was asking her way too many questions about their policy process. How are, how are we going to tackle all of this work that has to happen? And board members, you might have kind of seen this develop, is how do we change a local policy? It happens in several ways. One, y'all can mention things. And we've talked about that. Anna, you've been talking a lot about school of choice. I want to see a school of choice policy. As a board, we can mention something we want to see. We could also get a legislative update, and they change legal, and then you look at your legal, and you're like, oh, well, now do I want to change my local? There's that way. And then, there's also through this comprehensive policy. And I would offer that it is not up to just the policy committee to say, oh, I think the board might want to change this, let's bring it to them. But as we're doing this, it's up to us as board members, look through those policies. And if you see something, then you can let your policy committee know. And then, also, I'll let our policy committee walk through, because I had tons of questions about those little yellow comments. Are you bringing that back? Are you discussing all that? What are your plans? And I'll let our chair kind of describe a little bit about how you're walking us through it. And what did those yellow comments mean?
We had a conversation as we gather in policy committee with Holly and Sean. Those comments that you see in the side are recommendations for us to look at from our Tasby person. And we go through all of those, you know, piece by piece. And, and what Trish and I realized today, as we were chatting, is some of those items that he's tagging on there, saying, you know, look at this, ask, you know, for building and facilities, is this what, what you'd like to do. We go talk to Sean and Holly, we go talk to Jimmy, and we figure out what that, what, what we're going to do there. We weren't taking off those comments from him. So, as we were sending those along, Trish thought that those comments were comments from us to the board. And so, she was asking comments based on some of those. And I was like, yes, we, we, we talked about those. And, and, you know, Sean brought a lot of times the content expert in whatever policy that was to us, which was recommended there. But then, in those side comments, they were still there, and it said, are you going to? So, I did talk to Sean today about, from now on, we will get those from the policy, you know, as the policy committee, we will see all of those, we'll go through those with Holly and Sean, and then we'll remove those and just send over the recommendations and those changes for the rest of the board to see, be able to talk to us, ask questions, and move forward.
And given that, let me see, I can, I can scrape off a lot of things here. That leaves, that leaves me with a question about CV Local. My question is in there, there's a discussion on, is the amount, the amount, the, the, the district and, and the board wants to set it at? And I'm curious, you know, I, I'm guessing y'all felt comfortable with that, so if y'all could just confirm. And then, the, the, the con, contract threshold and the project, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read now with my, with my eyes. I need to put these back on. The, the project and contract award, wait, the project delivery and contract award wording that we have, is that the recommended method y'all are still suggesting?
All of those are the recommended, the only things that you're going to see in there. And excuse me, because I didn't bring my glasses, and I'm borrowing somebody else's, so I have to look at my notes that I can't zoom in on. And I'm like...
So, while, while you're looking at that, there was actually a late minute development on that after Trish, there's been, we've been having conversations all day. I've, I've talked with Holly, I've talked with Gloria. And so, on CV, we're actually going to ask that we pull that one back and look at it. Jimmy and I were discussing it this afternoon, and he was looking at it. And he had concern, actually, on the definition section, that as he was looking at it as applied to what we're about to work on, that there might be some unintended consequences on how that definition would apply. And so, we're, we're actually going to ask the board, and I didn't even get a chance to catch up with you, Gloria. I'm so sorry about that. This literally just came up within the last couple hours. We're going to ask to pull that back, so that Jimmy can work with us to look at that and make sure that that definition is tight and isn't going to create some, some hiccups for us and, and our projects coming forward.
Well, then, I will table that question. We're moving along very quickly.
But the question on there was really just the definitions on CV Local. It wasn't changing those amounts, right? It was just the definitions for facilities and maintenance and...
That, the, the two significant changes that are currently on that recommended proposal had to do with definitions, and then also removing the "or designee," which you'll see throughout the policy, because that's actually already covered globally in your policy BJA, which actually already gives the superintendent authority to delegate, unless there's specific policy that, that restricts him from delegating authority. And so, by doing that, we actually remove a lot of uniqueness to policy that is unnecessary. And I, I, I bring that up, because we did have some discussion last time about the consequences if we have unique policy that doesn't meet the standard. And so, this is just purely informational, but I think it's worthwhile for you to have in the back of your mind as you think about this, because I think you went away, just from a fiscal prudent standpoint, where it's actually really important to you to have something unique to your, your district and to, to you as a board, and where you might say... and where you might say, "Yeah, the standard is okay and it meets the legal requirement." The reason I bring that up is when we have what is, when you look in that lower left-hand corner, we've talked about it, it'll say the policy, whatever, and then it'll be an A or a B, and usually that's one of the template options, or it'll have an X. If it's X, that means it's a unique policy. If it's unique, each time we have to revise that policy, it costs $38 per unique page of that policy. Plus, if it requires legal review, we get billed at a rate of $175 an hour. Now, I'd submit to you that $175 an hour is incredibly reasonable for legal review, but it is a cost. And so we just need to be mindful of that. And so I think, as we've all discussed, I think that what we want to impress upon you is that I think you want to think about, is it really important? Do you have a specific purpose for having something be unique? You don't want to just be unique to be unique, because that imparts a cost on you as a district.
Okay. If it's okay, I'd rather save questions for CV Local than for just when y'all bring it back. And we'll look at it all together, and I'll see if anything comes up then.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think it would be a good use of our time to ask anything more about that. Board members, were there any other questions y'all had on the policy recommendations from the committee?
So as you think about the questions, something we didn't quite cover as the policy is intent here tonight was if you have questions or if there's something you want to pull out, otherwise what we're going to do with this chunk is what we did with the last chunk of policy is move that to your consent agenda. So if it's something that you specifically would like to pull out for deeper discussion, that's what we need to know tonight in order to properly develop that board letter for you for your next meeting for consent agenda.
Is it possible, I'm curious about board appetite. There's two parts that I think I would like to see if we can pull out for just right now. The DL Local on teacher workload, there was a recommendation to delete that policy. If we could just put that aside before we delete it, I'd like to see what happens this legislative session, what comes out, and does that impact, are there things in there and we might need to review it? And so if administration could just bring something back after legislative session, say, "Yes, we still recommend deleting this," or "Here are things from legislation that y'all could address."
So here's some food for thought on that particular one, because it deals with duty calendars and whatnot. Right now Tasby has recommended, it's their recommendation to delete it. However, if the legislature does something that makes new requirements on us, we have been told by Eric that we will see that in Update 121. Holly and I had some discussion about this, and Holly, correct me if I'm speaking out of turn here, but something that we thought is it might make sense to go ahead and remove it, because then you're starting with a fresh slate when you get the new update that is aligned to whatever legislative outcome there is. So that's just food for thought. We can still remove it if that's the will of the board, but...
Well, no, as long as we can have a place for that discussion, just to come back, I'm fine with that. Policy, board, what do y'all think?
I think right now what we were saying was to remove it, and when Tasby tells us that, you know, we need to put something else in there, then we do that. A lot of these pieces, too, were already in teacher contracts. And so I don't, I guess I'm not understanding what you're asking for, specifically like leaving it in there for now, or...
Removing it from the suggested changes, so don't delete it. But again, as I said, if we're going to have the conversation, I'm fine with that. We'll just target that and bring that conversation back after the legislative session.
Okay.
So. And then the other one I had a question on was CL Local. And there was a recommendation to delete that. I've seen other districts have this as a local policy. And this is one of those things where we were deemed by our curriculum audit because it talked about how is your facilities being aligned in your usage with your curriculum? And there's ways to build that out. I don't know if it's fruitful right now at this time to have that complete discussion. What I'd like to just do is remove it from this group that we're going to do all the changes to, if the board's up for that. And once we get more of that long-range plan developed, then we can pull that back and send it to the policy and pull back and see if that's something that needs to be developed, or would the Policy Committee suggest we go ahead and delete it? And those were, that was it?
I can say, for that policy, I did agree with removing it because it's curriculum facilities, and, well, that's what all of our facilities are intended for, for curriculum usage, for teaching and learning, and they're all intended for LISD. And so we were, I don't know what else we were going to add there. I don't know, maybe you want to send a sample of what you are looking for in that policy to the committee, and we could look at that?
Sure, I can send y'all some other things from other districts to compare that with. Again, that goes back to kind of history on a curriculum audit. That was something where we were deficit on, and so just, you can have it in other places. We do have some discussions where we talk about that curriculum alignment with our facilities. It's also in our strategic plan. But for policy, given that we're doing our long-range planning committee, it seemed like it was matching what I saw in some other district local policy. So that's why I was thinking for tonight and for expediency, I didn't go get all of that. I just thought, well, maybe if we just push that aside, go through what we know, and then we can come back to that discussion, see if there's even an appetite for it.
See, I think, I honestly think we delete it, because this is in our strategic plan. It specifically says it in there, and we've got this five-year plan, and there's different, you know, there's the key questions, and then what are we supposed to get to? And then it talks about the long-range plan. I mean, if we wanted to go into that detail, but I don't really see why we need a policy on this when we have our strategic plan that eventually, you know, goes to the superintendent's evaluation. There's that accountability right there.
I'll pull it up again. I know we wanted to be expedient tonight, so I was trying to just remove it, but I'll pull up the discussion and the actual language if...
Yeah, I'll just make a quick comment, because I did look at what some other school districts were doing with this policy, and it was really geared towards energy conservation, energy management. And that is in our CL legal.
So if you'd like time to think about it, I don't have, think we have any issue with pulling that for now? We can always bring that back in a future agenda if you change your mind. In the meantime, Madam President, if you find something that aligns with what you're thinking, I think as Gloria indicated, you could send that to the committee, and we can take a look at it and see if that is something for the board to consider in the future.
All right, if that's okay. And again, just this brought up from long-range planning committee, let me go find a few of those things. I'll send it. And if there's not an appetite, that's fine, too, but at least we can keep this process moving, because the point is to try to get it all cleaned up and move forward, so.
How long have these policies been in place?
It really depends on the policy. If you look at the bottom of the policy, it'll have the latest adoption date. The entire policy manual, I think, initially came in around 1990, 1991?
Before that.
It was before that. I think it got overhauled in '94, I believe. So there are some that are very old. There's many, though, you'll see that have been updated as recently as your last meeting. So when you look in the policy manual, you look at that date at the bottom of adoption.
And Tasby's recommendations have come in this last year?
Say again?
How long has it been since Tasby's made these recommendations?
Since...
Tasby makes recommendations regularly, and that's why when you look at the policy, you see the date that it was updated. And so when you ask, like, "How old is this policy?", you'd have to ask, "Are you talking about CFG Local, CKE Local, CL Local, CV Local, DB?" I mean, you'd have to tell, ask us exactly which one, because each policy is going to be different and have a different update. And Tasby rolls out updates constantly. There's always updates, and as they come out, as a board, we look at those and have a discussion and adjust to make sure we're...
From all those recommendations, all those times, our board has never really looked at a comprehensive review until now.
No, that's incorrect.
So what was the holdup? I guess, you know, I've been looking into it, other school boards have been moving away from Tasby recommendations, so I'm wondering why we're going towards them.
Okay, anyway, so I think Trisha's plan is a good plan, pull those two out, and we can bring those back for further discussion. And that way, we can put those other items in consent. And if somebody has questions about specific policies that they want to move out and ask a question about a policy, then we can have that discussion.
Just a couple of other things I want to report about the committee's work. We have been working on coming up with some, not necessarily a rubric or strict criteria, but a working model for the committee and looking at things like, when will we direct things to regulations as opposed to being in policy? And so kind of looking at that, of course, we'll start, you subscribe to Tasby's Policy Service, and we'll start with their recommendation. It doesn't mean that you are bound by that recommendation, but trying to streamline the policy manual and make sure that it's just addressing policy as opposed to getting into the day-to-day management and operations. So generally, what we're going to look at is, is this something that, is this something that gets into the how is this program supposed to be implemented? Once it starts telling staff how to do their job, that's probably going to be something that we're going to look and direct towards regulation. Is this something that's already in a handbook, the employee handbook, the student handbook? Is this something that's already in administrative regulations? So we're looking at trying to come up with a working process for looking at that. Of course, the Policy Committee will be inspired or guided, if you will, by the board's guiding documents that are all listed in your board policy. And we've come up with a way to kind of prioritize addressing the policies that come up. We'll look at the policies that the administration identifies as being urgently needed to be addressed, like you did, I think, a couple of D policies last meeting. And then we'll look at the policy updates as they come in so that they don't stack up on themselves. And Paul, to your question, you know, after every legislative session, there's a big lift to make sure that policies reflect the new changes in state law. As changes are made in federal law, then they make recommendations to change that. So that's the, those are the big ones, but other ones, as regulations change, too, that are adopted at the state and federal level, then Tasby monitors that. And the district, like most districts in the state, pay for that service from Tasby. And so, well, that'll be kind of the second priority. And then other policies identified by the board, like I think I heard you talk about EH Local this evening. There appeared to be consensus among the board to look at that. And then policies that individual board members would like to address. So that's kind of our mechanism for prioritizing that. The other thing that we've done is I've identified all of your policies that have an exhibit, because at one of the last meetings, we talked about how Tasby is recommending that certain exhibits be withdrawn. And so we've identified, you've got 13 policies that have exhibits. The only ones that I've seen so far that Tasby's recommending removing the exhibit from the policy manual are just the complaint forms. So those would be DGBA, FNG, and GF. The others, I haven't seen a recommendation so far, but we'll track that and we'll keep track of where, if that exhibit is withdrawn, where people can find that information on the district's website.
All right, if there are no more questions, then these items that we talked about then, they're going to be on consent at our next meeting. All right, we'll move on to our next agenda item. 10C1, Operations, Discussion of District-Wide Intruder Detection Audit Report Findings.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Gearing. Excuse me. So over the past eight months, this Texas School Safety Center has conducted 32 intruder detection audits on our campuses. The audits test whether a campus is accessible to an unauthorized individual. The audits help identify how campuses can improve safety for students, such as ensuring exterior doors are locked and securely closed. Tonight, I'm here to disclose two recent state findings at two of our schools. One school's finding was due to two exterior doors that were not closed, and the auditor was able to access the campus. Based on the findings, John Graham met with the principal to discuss the issue and helped create a plan to ensure doors are not left open. Part of the plan included our directive of security and law enforcement, talking to the staff and providing additional training to ensure staff understand the concerns with exterior doors being left open. The second school had an exterior door finding due to a door being opened slightly for extra ventilation as students were working in a shop. The door was behind a fence, but the fence does not meet current safety specifications. One of the items in the bond that passed Saturday will address this issue because the fence will be raised to meet the new safety requirements. I'm sorry, I'm not giving additional details for this finding in the public session. By doing so, it would identify the campus and location for the findings. We acknowledge that parents and community members are likely very interested in the detail of the audit results. However, it's in the best interest of the students that we do not share this information to the broader public as it could lead to compromising important campus security information. We do not want findings at any of our schools, and this makes four campuses with findings out of 32 audits. Our campuses have done an excellent job this year in being diligent in keeping doors locked and closed, and the audits, I think, show that. I think this is a testament to the seriousness our campuses and district personnel take to ensure our campuses are safe. Specific details of the intruder detection audit will be discussed in the closed session and was discussed with the Safety and Security Committee on May 8th. We'll continue to work with our School Safety and Security Committee for feedback and support on best practices to provide a safe learning environment for our students and staff while maintaining best practices for learning. The support from the state in conducting the intruder detection audits is just one of many actions we are taking to ensure our schools are safe. We are committed to providing a safe and secure learning environment for our staff and our students. We know that this work does not end, and we appreciate the board's support.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes this agenda item. We'll move on next to Item 10C2, Consider Approval of Food Service Management Contract.
Good evening, Madam President and Dr. Gearing and Board of Trustees. I'm here to discuss the selection and approval and ask for action tonight on our CNS contract. If you'll remember, we went out for RFP in December and started that process. We received three proposals. We evaluated those proposals and then submitted to TDA back in April and got that results and approval on the 1st of May. And so we're seeking action this evening for our selection of Southwest Food of Excellence. It was the selection for this year.
Board members, any questions?
I moved that the board award the Food Service Management Contract to Southwest Food Service Excellence.
I second. I have a motion for Anna, a second from Chris. Any other conversations? All right, then I would like to ask for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. That concludes this agenda item. We'll move on next to Operations. 10C3, Discussion of 2023-2024 Total Compensation Recommendations.
Good evening, Madam.
Yes, go ahead. To clarify, this is the compensation review. You're going to tell us about all the great work you did to look at our compensation across the district. This is not yet the portion where we talk about how it fits all into the budget. This is just the first part of the conversation.
It is the first part. I'm going to talk to you about what we've found through the compensation review and then what our recommendations are based on where we are in the budget process and the legislative session. So we will move forward. Just a reminder, the total reward system, we talk a lot about the whole student, serving the whole student. And this is where we talk about serving the whole employee. Our compensation system, where the base pay is critical to everything that we do, we have a full benefits plan. There's so many other things that go into a comprehensive system that if your base pay isn't, you know, at the market level, you have a hard time building it up with those other programs. So just another, you know, reminder that our base pay is really...
So just another, you know, reminder that our base pay is really the key element in our compensation program. So our compensation philosophy covers many aspects. We listed here, just to familiarize you with what we look at when we're going into attracting, retaining qualified employees across the district. We want to stay competitive with our labor markets, definitely overseeing our internal equity between all jobs that we have within the district based on responsibilities and skills. We are an experienced-based pay system, so giving credit for that job-related experience for individuals. Also want to be cost-effective and budget-conscious. We have a budget we have to live within. We're always looking at that when we're making recommendations. Of course, administering it fairly inequitably across all departments and districts, and then very much aligning to our strategic goals and mission and vision. So we will start with across-the-board review. When we're looking at local districts, our market, these are the districts that we're looking at. A little bit has changed since this presentation was put together. We're in a legislative session, and so districts are holding a little bit longer to see what legislation may come forward. What we know now, Austin has actually moved from five to six to, we're hearing, 8%. Inns, Georgetown, Lake Travis, they're still sitting at two or three. Flugerville at three. Round Rock previously was at three. They have done a presentation with their board last week for 5% and feel like that they will be looking at 5% next week. So we'll be watching that closely because they are what we consider our primary competitor when it comes to especially our teaching staff. So just one more caveat, as we're moving forward in this presentation, these assumptions are what we have built into our comparisons to our market. We do our best in estimating what, how they would rebuild their scales based on what they're taking to the board for their across-the-board increases. All right, so looking at historically across-the-board salaries, just as a reminder, last year, the board approved 5% for administrators, 5% for teachers, 4% for everyone else. Very significant increase for our employees. So kudos to the board for keeping our teachers and other staff at the focus of our market. Historically, just specifically to teacher pay, if you look at the gray columns, we're looking at the Texas increase as well, as well as Central Texas, and then more specifically to Round Rock being our closest competitor and how that moves across into our highest salary and increases. If you recall, in 2021, we did have a budget constraint where we were not able to do an increase, whereas other districts were able to do that small 2% increase. So we did lose some ground there. However, the board did respond to that and did a one-time incentive for our employees to try and make up for that. So here is where we sit currently with our teacher comparisons. Lake Travis last year and Round Rock did some adjustments to their, well, Lake Travis five-year and above. And as you're reading this, the highlighted areas is where we are behind compared to the district in that row and column. So Round Rock, they did some adjustments at their 15- and 20-year scales, so we have a little bit of catching up to do with that. We always put a 2% in here because that's what we start with, start with in our budget assumptions. As you can see, if we did a 2% and the other districts did what they're talking about on that, on that previous slide, we would definitely lose ground. So we know that a 2% is really not what we need to, to stay competitive with our districts, which y'all have already had a conversation with Pete about, that we're looking at more of a 3% starting point. So we'll move to that. This is your 3% comparison. So if Round Rock does 5%, looking at falling behind a little bit there, but, but really maintaining a pretty good market position with all of our other surrounding districts. You'll see the orange row is Leander ISD, and then comparison to median, those all look very well. You want to be around 100%. We're falling right in line with that average salary in the lower right being 101%. So, you know, over the years, we've, we've run between 101 and 104, and so we're still in a good market position. We went ahead and ran a 5% scenario just because we're in a legislative year. We, other districts, you know, we're, we're hearing that they may be doing something larger than a 2% or 3%. So, so many unknowns. We went ahead and ran with a 5% scenario, but I think as you'll see as we go further into the presentation, as to what this would cost, we may be looking at more of a 3% or 4%. All right, so counselors and RNs, we remain competitive in this area. Of course, the counselor scale is tied to the teacher scale at 5,000 above teacher scale, and then you have an adjustment for the number of days counselors work across the different campuses. But looking would, if you look to the far right, remaining in 101, 102, 99% range, which is very good for staying competitive in this market. So here's the cost of the across-the-board scenarios that we're looking at for all of our scales. We have a total of eight scales with approximately 592 employees. The 2% is the first scenario at 6.3, with the 3% 9.5. And then, of course, you see a big jump in the 5% at 15.9 million. So significant cost increase from 3% to 5%. So we also did a comprehensive scale review. Wanted to just review quickly. We have, we've tried to remain on a cycle of review because it allows us to do a deeper look at our scales. However, with COVID and the very fast, rapidly changing market, we have looked at all of our scales for the last two years. Every year, we look at the teacher scale and the stipend scale just to ensure we're remaining competitive. We do want to return next year to this rotating scale so that it gives us a chance to look deeper and wider at each of those categories. With paraprofessionals and auxiliary, that would be coming up for next year review. So this is historical salary scale review. This is just a huge shout-out to the board. This is a lot of information, but if you look across at that bottom row, it just speaks to the absolute significant commitment this board has made to keeping our market adjustments in line with our market so that we can recruit and retain our highest-quality staff for the district. So big shout-out to you all for that commitment and support for our reviews and approving those reviews. All right, so just another look as we go into the compensation review. These are the districts that we looked at. These districts have historically paid the highest for these jobs within Central Texas, so we want to look at those. Just a quick review of across our eight scales, who lives in each of those scales. This is our exempt level positions that cuts across the campus, the district, operational, and then our licensed professional. Then you have next our non-exempt scales, which includes our office paraprofessional, our auxiliary, and our transportation. And then lastly, we have our information technology scale, which is a hybrid, both exempt and non-exempt jobs on this scale. Tasby did the review this year. They have a greater access to private sector survey information, and so we have used them to do that review. So what do we look for? Just a quick reminder, we have two components, internal equity as well as external competitiveness. That's a balance. We definitely want to look at market, but we, we must make sure that internal equity remains in balance. So as we're looking at that, just a reminder that our teacher scale is the basis for which everything else is built. We use the teacher scale to build up and the teacher scale when we're building our non-exempt positions. So as you're looking at this, this is the story that tells you how important it is to maintain equitable increases to all scales. Because when you have the teacher scale accelerate faster than the campus and district scales, you really create this inequity that disincentivizes teachers who are wanting to move up into that career path into administrative positions. And so we get these, y'all get those let's talk every year with teachers saying, I moved into the, an art specialist or, you know, a curriculum specialist, and I'm making less money. It's because everything is tied together. It's every one of our scales is a stair step, beginning with our teacher scale. So it's really critical. We did come in and make some adjustments from last year's increases to give this a greater spread so that our art facilitators are further apart from our teachers so that they would see an increase as they move into an administrative position.
So I think what I hear you saying is that if we give differentiated raises, different raised number to teachers and nurses and counselors than we do to others, like we did when we did the 5-4, and that disrupts the parity of the system.
Exactly. That's very well said. Yes, disrupts the parity of the system. Yes, so just wanted to bring a very live example of what that looks like. And as you heard earlier, we're starting to build in those teacher leadership programs so that teachers can stay in the classroom, make money, additional stipends and things for staying in the classroom, but also doing additional leadership. So not every teacher wants to leave the classroom and go to administration, so we're trying to create career paths for both, both categories of teachers. All right, so 2%, I'm going to quickly go over this because we know that 2% is not where we need to be. It would be a huge market adjustment at $3 million at a 2% increase. So let's move on to the 3%. 3%, it does get us movement in the market, gets us into the 99% to 100% range for most jobs, and it's a cost of $1.6 million with, in addition to the 3% across the board. This puts us in a good position for all positions. Again, we'll do auxiliary and transportation, a deeper dive into those. But as you recall, we did a $15 minimum increase last year for those positions, which gave them significant increases. But we're looking, still, you want to stay in that 90% to 110%. So we're very, very well-placed with a 3% across the board. And then, of course, a 5% gives us an even higher market edge, but knowing this may be So other recommendations, we are bringing forward several recommendations this year that we haven't looked at in the past, and one is a custodial and CNS South differential pay. We're still having difficulty hiring custodial and CNS staff for the South. It is a, you know, long drive for many people, and we're just seeing the recruitment and the retention for this area really struggling. So what we're recommending is a $1.50 differential for, to help with the, the cost of driving to those southern areas. We're hoping that this will be able to help us recruit and retain staff for those south campuses. This is a cost of $142,000, but hopefully that retention will be, see more, even more cost avoidance savings. So the stipend review, like I said, we do stipend review every year because it's so closely tied to teachers, and most of these stipends are paid to our teachers. Very few, as we would expect, adjustments to stipends this year with just a few day and some days additions and equalization for assistant coaches, and then a theater director for a cost of $24,000. So overall, looking very good with our stipends across the district. Substitute pay, we just have one small change to our long-term degree to get us where we're competitive in all areas compared to our local market as well as Round Rock. Now, this is, of course, making the assumption that districts remain stable in their recommendations for their substitute pay. So we feel like this is a small adjustment that will give us great gains for $59,000. Student co-op and teacher incentives, this is a new look at recruitment and retention effort. We are all competing for new teachers coming out of programs, and we are all competing to get them to stay in our districts. So other districts, we, in our market review, we found that other districts had implemented this student-teacher incentive. So we definitely want to remain competitive with our student-teachers. So what we're recommending is a student-teacher recruitment incentive of $1,250 per term. And then if that student-teacher signs on with us to become a teacher, we would give them an additional $1,250. Also incorporated into this is our new-to-profession for those teachers just starting out. We know teachers spend a lot of money setting up their classrooms, and even though we do provide many resources for our new-to-profession and new teachers, this is just something additional $200 lump sum to help them with their classroom resources. And then our cooperating teachers are those teachers who work with our student-teachers and mentor them, and in the past, we have not provided a stipend to them. So we would like to provide a small stipend for their efforts in mentoring those teachers coming up into the system. This is a cost of approximately $235,000. Additional proposals, just a reminder of the stipend approval for our special education positions for a total of $1.8 million. Those are in effect, and those position titles are listed in the bottom left. So we're very, very happy to be able to offer these stipends that bring us in line with our market. Then we're also bringing forward an employee longevity pay option. In previous conversations with Pete, he had a $4.8 million proposal. We've looked at many different scenarios for a longevity pay option, and this is where we have landed. This is, incentivizes people on the five years, and so giving a significant bonus amount of $4,000 as people hit those five years. This honors the longevity of staff in an equitable way. We've looked at doing different amounts for teachers, for professional, for paraprofessional, and this is what we're looking at. We've had lots of conversations about, the cost of this is three, almost $3.1 million, and it costs about $3.1 million for every percent of increase for and across the board for all employees. So really, the conversation, we, we need some guidance from you all, is, is this the best way to spend the funds each year? I'll give you an example. For next year, this would impact about 700 employees. We have about 700 employees who would be at one of these year longevity years, milestones. But if we wanted to do an additional 1%, it's about the same amount of money. And so you, you have to decide, there's, there's pros and cons to both. You have, you know, if across the board, it assists employees who are looking at retirement because it is TRS-eligible, whereas the longevity pay option does not, does not count towards their TRS. There's pros and cons. It's something we're going to have to struggle with and, and talk through, but this is an option that we can consider. And then we'll move into benefits. So we have here the medical insurance history. Really, I'll draw your attention to that top orange with the total plan cost over the last several years. We're leaking out for 2023 approximately a $35 million plan year projection. Then if you look at the next row, the average premium increase, just as a reminder, we've been able to keep employee premiums flat and for a couple of years, have a small decrease. With 2023, we, we implemented a 2% increase, but how that relates is, is below the $19 employee-only plan. employee-only plan, stayed $19. The $1,500 deductible plan went from $65 to 66, so a $1 increase. When you're looking at 2%, it's not like 2% of, you know, $19 is different than two, a 2% across the board. So it's relative. So we're gonna give you some more information about, um, what that looks like for employees when we're looking at the 2024 year. So just quickly, um, a little bit of historical, we haven't talked about this for many, many years. Um, so just wanted to do a quick history. We started this self-funded plan in 2007, 2008. The board approved a million dollars to start the plan and, uh, with the 320 per employee per month contribution and then of course, employee premiums. Now we're looking at a $35 million plan, um, you know, with, with thousands more employees in it. So this plan has been, you know, so beneficial for our employees. It's allowed us to have great flexibility, uh, and do things for our employees that we wouldn't have otherwise been able to do had we gone into TRS, um, or stayed fully funded. Um, so if you, I'm gonna draw your attention to the gold bar where you see the 320, that is the district's contribution. And as you can see, the district's contribution has remained fairly flat with even a decrease in some, uh, years for budget constraint reasons. And then in 1718, we really asked the board to commit to a small increase to the employer contribution each year to, to help with the cost sharing. Um, you know, we were seeing significant inflation and claims expenses as, as healthcare becomes more and more expensive. The board committed to doing that and has really put the plan in a, in a really healthy place. So just speaking of the, the cost share, this is just a historical, um, review of the cost share. In 2019, we were picking up more of the share at a 4952. The gold top is the employee cost. The blue, uh, section is the LISD cost. And you want it to stay somewhere, you know, 50/50 is perfect, um, but that's going to fluctuate from year to year. In 2020, we didn't incre, did not increase the district's contribution because of financial constraints. And as you can see, the employees picked up a little bit more of that cost share. In 2021, we reinstituted that, um, increase of contribution as, and as you can see, that shifted, um, shifted back. We did see more large claimants, which also increased our cost share. In, uh, 2022, we had many more large claims as well as a $7 million claim. And so that's why you're seeing that 57% split. So we're anticipating that to, um, flatten back out for 2023. Um, we don't anticipate another $7 million claim, knock on wood. All right. So as a district health plan contribution compared to our surrounding districts, we've talked about the $350 per employee per month, but the district has always contributed for all employees who are eligible for the plan, not just those who are participating. So when you do that math, it comes out to $492, um, a month essentially for those participating. Um, it has taken that amount to fund the plan and the claims as the, um, as we have seen inflation increase. Again, uh, for a self-funded plan, we're right there in the middle of where other districts are in their contributions. It's interesting, not very many districts are self-funded in the state, but we have many around us. And so that's why it's so important for us to remain self-funded and not go into TRS. Active care, in addition to, we always do the calculation and it would be as roughly a 68% increase in employee premiums to go into TRS active care. So that just kinda tells you, um, how the plan is running comparatively. We always do a TRS and Round Rock comparison, even though it's, it's really kind of apples and oranges because plans are very, very different in terms of deductibles and copays and things like that. The highlighted yellow is where the district is higher in the premiums. Um, however, we know that many plans are struggling. Um, so we, we are looking at making some adjustments to our premiums so that we're bringing these more in line, but still very competitive. And I will point you to the plan value, which is in orange on both the top and the bottom. And those dark blue columns, every, in every category, our plans have a higher value, which means our employees, when they use the insurance, are playing less out of pocket. We wanna have a high-value plan, um, for our employees and we've remained constant for many years, uh, having higher-value plans. So that's important. So this is just a, um, an evaluation of how we are actively managing the plan. And this is way more information. So I'm gonna direct you to the upper right corner. And this is really the summary of what all of this says. Um, over, since 2017, we've saved the plan over almost $14 million, which is roughly about $2 million a year. This is how we have kept, um, premiums flat through these renegotiations of contracts, through these, um, innovative programs that we work actively with our consultants to bring to the district's plan so that we can keep premiums low, district contribution low, but remain with a very, very healthy, rich benefits for our employees. So now let's go to 2024 projection. Because our plan runs on a calendar year, we are only three months into our plan year before we're trying to project what our 2024 rates will be. Uh, so it gets a little tricky and we'll keep an eye on these, but what we're looking at is a 4.5% increase for 2024. But what that, we're gonna go into what that translates to, uh, in terms of premiums. Um, the lower portion of the table takes you through each of our plans, but I'm gonna go to the next slide where it really just kinda sums it all up. So 76% of our employees are enrolled in employee-only plans. That's 31 with that 4.5%. And 86% will see $20 or less. So of the 3130, or I'm sorry, of the 4,000 employees, 3100 will see a $10 or less per month increase in their premium. So even though it looks like a, you know, even though 4.5% when you're looking at a 3% across the board, it's very minimal for our employees overall. So projected benefits fund, we make assumptions for our self-funded plan, just like we make assumptions for our district plan with a 4.5% claims trend, 2% of growth, uh, 7% of, 7.5% in our fixed expenses. And then you saw that 492 in the district contribution. Um, Pete has been looking at some different ways of funding the plan and the funding amounts are not going to change, but the way we fund it, uh, is going to change with the district contribution of 410. And then he has some other avenues of funding the plan to, um, open up some of, some funds for other district use. And I'm gonna let him, if you have questions about that, we'll let him go dive deeper into that conversation. We're looking at a 4.5% um, projection over the next four years. But again, that's very dependent on how claims run. They could run much better and we could see no increase or we could have, uh, claim years that are much higher and we might have to see higher, uh, employee premium adjustments. So that brings us to our full recommendations, uh, for our total rewards. 2% again, uh, gonna brief, briefly hit this, but we're gonna move to 3%, uh, which when you tie everything together that you've seen tonight with the salad, with the across-the-board, the scale adjustments and the additional recommendations for the stipends, the South District, the, um, student co-op, student-teacher co-op incentives, longevity, uh, we're looking at $16.7 million for 3%. And then looking, going ahead and taking a look at the 5%, much greater price tag of $23 million. Um, but again, you know, we have the longevity bonus proposal in there that equates to essentially a 1% increase. I know the board has, has communicated that, um, you're comfortable with the 3%. That is something that you could consider as we're moving forward, um, about what to do with that, uh, that $3.1 million that we have kind of earmarked for either a longevity bonus or potentially a 1%. Now, as we're looking at next board meeting, there, we definitely have some options, um, because we know the, we may not know everything about our funding. So as we have in years past, we can certainly look at implementing, uh, one-time incentive payment options that we would have in there if we go into the year and we have opportunities for that. So we'll go ahead and put that language into the compensation plan. So if this board, um, has that opportunity, we would have that language in there. Um, and then additionally, if it's at the board's pleasure to put language in there that would allow for, um, superintendent authority to consider an additional increase of the legislation, um, that goes through, provides us with additional funding, then we can definitely do that. And I'll let Dr. Gearing address any of those options.
I think I'll summarize if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Just what we have, um, and I'm not gonna go into the benefits piece because, um, I don't think those things are gonna shift too much. But, um, what we're presenting as a recommendation is, um, if you'll just go back one, is th, this slide, which has a 3% across the board and the 1% longevity built in. So it's essentially a 3 plus 1. Um, that 1%, I think what Carolyn is laying out is that 1% could be the longevity, which doesn't affect everybody evenly because if you happen to be lucky and you've hit a five-year mark in this next year, um, then you'll get that payment. But if you're in an in-between year, then you will not. So a different way to do that is to take that 3.1 million and roll it into an extra percent. Um, so it becomes a 4% across the board, um, increase at the same cost, um, essentially as what's, what's on your screen. Um, and then the two options that we have going forward, um, are one-time payment options. We're not talking about an amount at all. What we're talking about is putting language in the compensation plan that will allow us to do one-time payment. And we've done this regularly every year. Um, the additional piece though, is to put language in the compensation plan that will allow us to bring back to you a further increase in actual raise, which we've not done before, should the legislature provide us enough funding to make it possible for us to do that. So my recommendation to the board at this time is to stick with the 3 plus 1 or 4% across the board, um, and put those two caveats in language in the compensation plan, um, so that we have the ability to make adjustments once we know what the legislature is doing.
Board members?
Is the 5 across the board, does that have the, the longevity rolled into it as well?
It does. If you see that, uh, third from the bottom, it has that 3 million.
Yes, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I can tell you, the, the thing I struggle with though is sometimes when we do our, our increases, our pay raise, we'll get the emails from teachers that say, I've been working here for how many years and teachers who just started are making more than I am. Um, and so I, I don't know if the longevity package that you're presenting is the right one yet. I don't know if there is one out there. Um, but I'm just, I know longevity is something that, um, as a board, we've talked about and we do see our teachers ask for that. Um, and so I will be following up with Pete with some more questions. I've actually, when you're up at the Capitol, meeting other trustees across Texas and you hear about these other, uh, things other districts are doing, I'm like, how did that work for them? And, and Pete will always give me those great details, so I'll follow up with him on a few more things. But, um, yeah, I, I, I don't know. I'm telling you, I feel split because I'd rather give the percentage, but then again, we have our teachers who say, yeah, but I've been here a long time and you don't recognize that. And it's important for retention efforts to recognize that. So I have mixed feelings.
Uh, do you know how important it, it is for the, whether it's TRS eligible or not? It's because you had indicated that those, uh, the longevity bonuses are not T, TRS eligible.
That's correct. The longevity bonuses, uh, TRS does not consider them eligible for TRS. So it does not count towards, uh, their, their annual income for that year. And we're on a highest 5.
And something I, that was, I kind of struggled with that version is just the five-year, every five-year, um, step or, yeah, that process. But then, when it comes to given raises across the board, the other thing that we hear from those who are, say, 10 years and above is, we're past the midpoint, so we really don't get that benefit. Am I saying it right? They don't really get that. It's not, it's not like that. Okay, maybe I'm not understanding.
Yeah, no, it, there, it's, um, it's confusing. Um, but we do, every teacher gets the exact same increase. How we calculate it, so the teacher scale is built on 30 years. So we take the 15-year salary, multiply it by whatever percent, 3%, 4%, and that's the amount that every single teacher receives. So we rebuild the scale every year. We rebuild all of the scales every year to account for whatever increase, um, the board gets. So there's never a teacher that has more years of experience that makes less. Um, everybody receives that same amount.
Yeah, but as a percentage of their salary, it's lower.
It's, no, well, as a percentage of the midpoint, yes. So if you're, if you're, we'll just take the, um, uh, 20-year scale. If you're at the 10-year mark, you're gonna, and you give a 5% raise, you're gonna get a 5% raise. If you're at the 3, it may be 5.8% of the midpoint, but you're still getting the same dollar amount as everybody in that level.
So how, how do we differentiate between, say, just pick a number, 10 and 15 years or 10 and 20 years, where they're getting a higher dollar amount?
Well, they're not getting a higher dollar amount. As a percent of the, of the midpoint, it's a higher or lower percent of the midpoint, but they're getting the same dollar amount.
Correct. But I'm just saying, trying to find a way where, say, 10, those are between 10 to 15 years, get a higher amount, say, from 0 to 10, higher dollar amount, from say, 0 to 10. I, I don't know what those, um, demarcations are, but say, from 15 to 20, you get a higher dollar amount than, or it could be from 10, from the previous step below. And so that way, it's built in that it's all TRS eligible.
It is.
And it's not based on this magic, I'm hitting that five-year mark this year, but everybody in that band gets that higher dollar amount.
Yes. And we, you know, we've had lots of conversations in the past with teachers and you have varying opinions. You have opinions of, I am, my, my, um, teacher next door is a 25-year teacher, I'm a 10-year teacher. Are we really, do we really have, uh, that much difference in, in what we're doing? And so we think everyone should get a fair increase because prior to, oh gosh, we've probably been doing a percent increase 15 years. Prior to that, we did do the step increase. And so, and every step is a different, um, range in between and teachers were very unhappy with that because if you were a 2 to 3 step or a 3 to 4 step, no one got the same amount. Um, and so they felt like everyone should get the same amount because we're doing the same job. So it's, you have varying, you definitely have varying opinions on, on how that, the best way to do that.
Can I try to answer what I think you asked as well? So you've answered a great question. I'm not sure it's the one she asked. Um, you have to ask yourself the question, what do you want longevity pay to do? Do you want it to get people to stay longer than where they are? Or do you want it to only reward teachers who've been here a very long time? So if you put incentives at five-year periods, then if I'm at three years, I may elect to stay for two more years to get to that longevity payment, as opposed to if I only added to 15-year-plus teachers, then if I'm a three-year teacher, now I've gotta stay until I'm at 15 years before I get any of that longevity incentive. Does that help?
It helps. Um, I mean, I was just giving an example where I started at 10 years, but it could be at five years. Um, but just, you gave me an example of how it used to be. Um, I'm just saying that some of the feedback that I've been getting is, maybe that's a preferable method.
Yeah, yeah, right. I, I completely hear you. There's, there's definitely varying opinions on, should you get more, the long- you get more the longer you're here or at various years of service?
Is there any polling or feedback that we're getting, that you've done with regards to?
We haven't done it in several years. It's definitely something that we could revisit with our teachers. It's a very different way of looking at it, but we could absolutely take a look at it and get feedback.
What, I assume that has an impact on our market, though, because one of the things that we do is really compare our scale to the market and make sure that it remains competitive at all levels.
Right.
And so if you, if you do it differently at different parts of the scale, I think it upsets the market.
It could. It could absolutely have an unintended impact of upsetting our comparison with the market.
I mean, there are, there already, you talked about school districts doing 8% or, I mean, they're already upsetting it. So we just do what's right for our teachers.
Right.
Sure.
This is more of a question for Dr. Gering. Last year, you did a listening session with our teachers. Are you planning to do that as well? Because that was amazing. I mean, it was, I went to the one last year at Cedar Park High School, and it was all about compensation. And I loved that it was a safe environment. They were able to express, you know, their concerns and what they want. Are we going to be able to do that same thing?
So we published those dates today. So we are going to be holding those listening sessions over the next several weeks.
All right. When we come back for the next discussion, I do want to better understand, and I can get with Pete ahead of time, that how this fits in our budget for stability.
Absolutely.
Because what you don't want to do is overcommit here because you don't want to look at reductionary force. So we need a couple of years to kind of look at. And so I guess that's what I started with, is saying, this isn't in the budget piece yet.
Right.
So that's important to consider.
Yes, that is important. We work very closely together as we're bringing forward recommendations. But yes, he will be able to better speak to the budget overall and how this fits into that.
And there is so much work here. I am sure board members will continue to review and reach out.
Absolutely.
They have any questions. I can always see, there's questions. We're going to be reaching out. And it is up to us to make sure we reach out ahead of time so that we can help foster quicker discussions and more streamlined when we get to the meeting. Thank you so much. There's a lot of work. Y'all have done so much, and I appreciate you bringing options to us to see how we can take care of our staff the best way we can.
Absolutely. This board has always been very supportive of staff and increases, so we appreciate you.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
On the longevity piece.
Uh huh.
Dr. Gering, you mentioned that if we choose not to do the longevity, that amount that, I can't see if there's.
3.1.
$3 million, sorry. I'm having vision problems, too. That just gets rolled in as an extra percentage, then?
Not necessarily. So the board could make that decision. What we're recommending is that we feel, to your point, that the budget can manage 3 plus 1 or can manage 4, either of those two options. We would not be comfortable going above that.
Feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to answer any questions or have further discussions about anything in the presentation or outside.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you all so much. Thank your office. Thank you all for your work. It's much appreciated. All right, we'll be moving on to Tennessee for Operations 2023 Certified Estimated Property Values and Recapture. That recapture number keeps growing.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees and Dr. Gering. The recapture payment does keep growing, and that is, at this point, that is one of the few things that are beyond my control this time. But is being, if whatever passes the legislature, if what passes what they're talking about, if they do some compression, that would actually reduce that number. But we will wait and see what they do on that end. So tonight, we're going to go over, we got our preliminary values from Williamson and Travis, the Cads. And so we're going to just kind of go over where we are, pretty high-level, fairly quick. Feel free to stop me with any questions, but other than that, we're just going to kind of just plow through it real quick. If you look at our, the far-right column here, our 2023 Certified Preliminary Values between the two counties, we have increase of about 9.8%. Most of our budget was based on 10%. I think we had, in the general fund, we had 15%, but between state and local, it washes out. So if you look at that, that piece looks approximately Travis County is about 25% of our property value, and 75% of our value now lies within Williamson County. The green line is our change in local value. The bluish-gray line is the change in revenue per ADA, and it's just a percent increase each year. You see the big jump of 16% and 27%. That was the Vater. It was the 10.3% was the Vater, 16 and 27 was the revenue per ADA, was the change in local values, big increases. The 3% for next year is the golden yield increase. Those pennies used to be worth $98.56, and now they're going up to $126.21. And then the next two years are just estimated out, and they're estimated at a flat 10%. Now, if you look at the bar graph on the bottom, the state value is kind of the lighter of the two shades. And the bar graph on the left is the darker color. So the state values is what the comp trailer says the property value is worth in Leander ISD. The left column is the local values, and that's what our central appraisal district, the two central appraisal districts are saying the values are. So as you can tell throughout the years, they've been fairly, you know, the Cads have been fairly right on market. As you kind of get to 2018, 19, 1920, seems to be a little gap, then a bigger gap, and a bigger gap, and the next few years are, again, are estimates. There've been more and more districts in the last couple of years that have got, we call it local value, which means your CAD is within the 5% delta of what the state says the values are. And as long as you're within that range, you're not penalized. But more and more districts are falling outside of that 5%. And as such, you have a grace one year, you have a grace two year, then when you get to year three, the state will use their state number in your formula, on your template. And so when you collect local taxes and at a local value that's less, when it goes into the template, it doesn't look like you are doing your local share, and so you lose out on state funding.
Let's make sure we're clear about this, though. So when you're saying, "we fall out," what did we do to fall out? Is that a district control thing?
The district did nothing. It's beyond our control. Yes. It's between the CAD or the, and the.
And we get the fallout between those two.
Yeah, we get the fallout. Typically, you have the two-year grace period, hopefully allow the CAD to get the values caught up, or you can appeal, go through that process. If you recall, maybe six, seven, eight weeks ago, there was a board update, kind of gave you a history of some values, things from 2020, 2021. That was a very unique situation that fell upon Leander ISD and about four or five other districts in our area. But through that process, we were able to actually get local, get reverted back to local values. And so we were able to continue to maximize our state funding. The top line is just the total tax rate going back to 2005, 2006. It was $1.75 back in the day. And now we're at $1.26 based on current law, not including whatever the state legislature does here in the next two weeks, or potentially in special session. But we're going to cross our fingers for the next two weeks. Okay, this graph is our, kind of our home values, our average market value and taxable value. The blue line is the average market value. This will come no surprise to you as members of the board, members of boards who are homeowners. The average taxable value, if you really get down to '22, '23, and '23, '24, the blue line goes crazy. And then because, you know, most homeowners are homesteaded properties, not all, but most, the average taxable value is capped at 10%. And so that's why you see the blue will go farther out. That's your market value, but the red stays within 10% of where it was in the prior year. So what a lot of people or a lot of taxpayers throughout the state of Texas are going to see this year is they're going to get their tax appraisal, and it's going to show their home value, market value, decreasing from the prior year. But it's going to show their taxable value going up from the prior year because the taxable value was playing catch-up. When you're capped at 10% and you have growth like that, I mean, it may take five, six, seven years to catch up. Well, if you go up for two or three years, then you go back down, your taxable value's still playing catch-up. So that will be a very common occurrence for homeowners throughout the state this year, not related to the district. All right, just clarify that. Put that out there. The green portion of this graph is our net MNO tax revenue. So this is our local tax collections, less estimated recapture. So it's at the net level. The bluish-gray is the INS tax revenue, and then the red is our local property value. So as you can see, as the property values go up, the local tax collections go up, or our net MNO goes up. And then our INS revenue, through that, that rate fluctuates. Our payment is about $125, $130 million a year for our bonded debt. And so that rate fluctuates as our, as our values fluctuate. The MNO really fluctuates only based on the state formulas and then the one year that we did the Vater. So this is the, same way, the net MNO tax revenue, and then the next little peach-colored is the state aid revenue. So just basically, you look at this graph, and you can see as your local values go up, your state funding decreases. The only reason the value, the total revenues go up is just because changes in basic allotment, changes in the school funding system throughout the years. But as the state, or throughout the state, local values go up, the state is the benefactor of those market conditions. And it's the state funding that they, the local, more local taxpayers pay it, the state funding decreases, and the state gets that benefit of the, of the, of the high property values. Recapture projections are based on current law. So '22, '23, you know, of the total, you know, $300, $370 million brought in from local taxes, 333.6 stayed in LISD, and then $49 million were sent back to the state via recapture. '23, '24, again, based on current law, would be about 356.9 million would stay in LISD, and 58.3 million would be returned to the state via recapture. So think of it in another term, for every $1 that we bring in through the MNO, based on '23, '24, that estimate, you know, you're looking at, was that 12.5%, 15, 16% of every, 16 cents of every dollar are going to the state. Doesn't even stay in Leander ISD. As opposed to on the INS side, every dollar you earn on the INS side, that full amount stays in Leander ISD. Again, just a recapture, if you look at it, based on current law, going out four years, you know, about $49 million this year, 58.3 the next year, 81.9 the year after, 109 the year after that. Look at our current debt, not including anything from the bond election from last week. We are, we have not, obviously, we have not sold any of those, we're still, haven't even canvassed the vote yet. So, but we look at, during our first round of sale in the late June, early July, but based on the data, prior to that bond election, bonded debt payment was approximately, you know, 100, 100, 100 million, 125 million. We've been paying debt off early. We were at the 33 cent tax rate. That was decreased from 46.5 a year ago, two years ago, and then this year. We'll continue the 33 cents. All right, any questions?
Board members?
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move to our next item, then. Where are we? Item, C4, Discussion of the 2023 Certified Estimated Property, oh, no, C5, Consider Approval Request for Qualifications or RFQ for Architecture Engineering Services for the 2023 Building Program.
Madam President, board members, Dr. Gering, with the bond passing last Saturday, we are looking to start the process to identify and name architect and engineers for the 2023 Building Program. We have listed all of the projects we're requesting to do this on, and we are, of course, just so you know, this does not commit any funds or projects, you know, contracts. It's just bringing the names back to you for a recommendation for approval.
I move that the board authorize the administration to begin the RFQ process for the selection of the architects slash engineers for the previously mentioned and described projects within the 2023 Building Program.
I second.
I have a motion from Christine, second from Francesca. Are there any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. Our next item we'll be moving on to is Consider Approval of Selection of Construction Delivery Method for the 2023 Building Program.
Yes, this, this is beginning the process to name the contractors for the projects listed on the page, and we are recommending the One-Step Delivery Method for Construction Management at Risk, which is what we have always used.
I move that the board approve the One-Step Construction Manager at Risk, CMAR, method for the 2023 Building Program, and the administration is to receive and rank the proposals and bring back a recommendation to the Board of Trustees for approval.
I second.
I have a motion from Christine, second from Francesca. Any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. All right, thank you, Jimmy, for concluding us. All right, board members, I will point out, Board Meeting Debrief 13, you can still answer your questions in your laptops before you unplug. And it is required by the state that we continually to do an annual evaluation, and we actually go a step further. That's why you see that on the side of the wall over there. That's a different part of our evaluation where we look at our effectiveness. So before you leave this evening, if you grab a hot dot, just find a line, and you can put it in there. It's that consensogram we heard Clay talk about earlier. We're using that for our meeting on continuous improvement. All right, it is 10:18, and for permission, oh, it's 11:18. It's 11:18. And we are going into closed session for purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and/or attorney-client privileged matter. Texas Government Code 551.074, deliberation regarding resignation, terminations, employment, reassignments, duties, and evaluation of personnel and public officers. Texas Government Code 551.0821, deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed. Texas Government Code 551.089, discussion of district-wide intruder detection audit report finding. And Texas Government Code 551.071, deliberation and consideration of employment of Wiley Middle School principal. There will be no action taken enclosed. We will come back out to open for any motions.
Board members, it is 12:03 a.m. And we are back from closed session. We're now in open. And do I have any motions from closed?
I move that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of Darla Smith for principal at Wiley Middle School, one-year probationary employment contract for personnel additions as presented in accordance with the salary scale policies and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2023-2024 school year.
I second.
I have a motion from Francesca, a second from Anna. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes, no nays, one absent, motion carries. Board members, we've concluded all the items on our agenda before us. If there's no objection, we will adjourn at 12:03.